Hello, Alaskans. I'm here in America, in Palmer, in the valley, in Alaska. Thank you for joining us all here tonight. We're in the Palmer City Council. Meeting is about ready to begin here at 6 o'clock. All these wonderful, heartwarming Alaskans are out here in the bitter cold letting the council and assemblymen, or the council members inside here in Palmer let them all know that they don't want the draconian Anchorage mask mandates to be instilled out here in the valley. Don't forget to like and share. Facebook scrolls on me if you don't. I'm gonna do my best to make my way inside for this thing so that I can livestream the whole thing for all you folks. Again, don't forget to like and share. We're out here in the bitter cold to let the city council of Palmer know that we do not want the mask mandates, the draconian mandates that they have passed in Anchorage. They're trying to do the same thing out here in Palmer now. We have about 50 people so far that have shown up out here protesting against these mandates happening. And the crowd is growing larger by the second. Hey sir, can you get a copy of that video? Facebook. Facebook, okay. My name's Matt Mallett. I'm the chapter president of the Alaska Proud Boys. And if you could tell me where that's gonna be. I'm Politidick. Litidick? Politodick. I'm on Parler. Are you on Parler? I am on Parler. Politidick on Parler. Okay, I'll find you on Parler and I will link to this video. But send me, look for Alaska Proud Boys on Parler and send me an invite and we'll link up on there. Okay. Okay.
Are you, are you doing a little video about this rally that we're having right now?
I'm doing that right now. I'm live.
I love it. I love it. I'm so glad you're here. I want everybody to know that this needs to not take over Palmer. We need to not have a mask mandate. We need to recognize that there are cures, there are treatments for COVID.
There is. Well, this, well, I can never say the two words for what those different ones for treatment are right now. And then Pfizer and the other guys, they've come out with.
With the vaccines, but treatments that are already tried and true. This is, this can be cured. This is when you have COVID, there's no reason to be shutting down schools and work and things. This, we really need to get the word out. We need to share the word to all the people. One guy is standing in the cold.
It is. It is. It is.
But thank you for getting this out there.
You can find it on Facebook, is where I'm on right now.
Okay, great. Where, what, under what?
I'm Politidick.
Okay, tell me, tell me, Politidick?
Yes.
Okay, I've seen some of your stuff. I didn't even know. I'm glad you're doing this.
Thank you. As you can hear, there are many, many people out here right now that are against these mask mandates that the city council is trying to pass. We're all standing out here in sub-zero temperatures right now and we are happy, proud Alaskans. We're up to about 50 people that are out here right now. I'm making sure those in the city council inside of that building know that Alaskans do not stand for this. The people that live in Palmer, people that may not live in Palmer but do lots of business here. I am one of those. Seventeen people in Palmer infected. There is no reason to be shutting down. If you haven't liked and shared already, go ahead and do that. If you're in the Palmer area, come on down, put in your two cents to the city council. Looks like they may already be. No, they're still not letting people in yet. That they do. Yeah, come on, I'm gonna show you guys the line here. Hello. Pretty good, pretty good. How are you doing today, Mike?
They said they were supposed to open, they let us in at 5:50. It's 5:54 now. And they're gonna let us, anyway, we just, yeah, we go in and speak and we have to walk out immediately.
Oh, so.
No press allowed.
No, no press allowed?
The only press that's in there is Palmer Free. That's it. So you're, you're screwed unless you wanna just stand outside and.
Oh, I give a difference here.
Come on.
All these nice, wonderful people are out here freezing their toucans off, ready to give their two cents about what is going on inside. They're only allowing one person in at a time from what I'm understanding. Ten people is what I read.
Yeah, but they're saying that we can have ten in at one time. Ten inside at one time is what they said.
Ten at one time.
That's what I read.
But only one press allowed. They're paid contract press.
They're one press. I don't know if he's pro or not, but he's the one press.
So, so you mean they're gonna censor my voice from being allowed in there?
Yep. And of course the issue in this, in the code Eugene, she called, she called the cops.
First five people who win in Tennessee.
No. I do. I am. I am here for the ordinance. I was actually here to livestream it. I'm Politidick on the alt media press. So, so we went from five to, from 10 to 5?
The council people that are already part of the council.
Oh, so the council is part of the 10 that they're allowing in there at the moment. I am against. I'm not in this for us.
Have you spoken to all these people?
Most of them.
Speak to them at this time.
One thing about the MDFCUs, they put about halfway through on everything.
So you heard it live here, folks. They're only allowing five people in at a time because they got five council members, which gives a total of 10. They're not gonna allow me inside to be able to livestream the event for livestreaming other than when I'm there to give testimony to complain. So as you just heard, they're only allowing five people in at a time. They have three color-coded pads of paper, one yellow, one blue, one pink. If you're for it, you're on the, the yellow. If you're unsure, you're pink. And then if you are completely against it, you're on the red. Um, so this is gonna be an interesting little event going on here. Everybody out here has to sit there, sit here and wait. I'm not sure how many minutes they're allowing each person to testify inside, whether it's two or three minutes to give their peas and tears. But they have no problem letting us all stand outside and freeze at sub-zero temperatures while this is going on. The line, as you can see, is getting longer and longer by the second. I've already been told I'm not allowed to be inside livestreaming this throughout the whole thing. I'm gonna be stuck outside until it's my turn to testify. Just two. Don't forget to like and share. Don't forget to make sure you tell all of your friends. I'm sure by looking at the faces of many of the folks that are standing out here, the line is more for against these mandates being put into place than they are for it. I'm Politidick. Politidick. I follow Alaska Politics and I run a Facebook page on it and I have also a bunch of my other alt media pages that I run. But all are the same name though. Oh, why would the news wanna show up here? They have, they're paid for news sitting inside. The news wouldn't wanna show up for this event. They wanna keep this as quiet as possible. They wanna show everybody in the status as for these kinda measures happening. I am doing good. So, so wait a minute. Now, there's the frontiersman, I believe, that's just sneaking by going on inside of the building. Are they gonna let him in there? Oh, they are. They're gonna let him into the building, but they're gonna keep me stuck outside. And as you can tell as they walk by, they know who I am. There isn't a news station in the state of Alaska that does not know who I am. Howdy, how you doing? They got the pledge of allegiance going on inside. Should we all be honoring right now or? We can't see no flag, but. They won't let me in there, Facilla. They're, they're letting other news companies inside. I don't know why they won't let me in. So, white, pink or blue? Yeah, you got it. It is BS. They're letting other press crew in there, but they won't let me in. So they had people sign up. They went out, they got into their vehicles, gave their phone numbers, expecting to get phone calls so they didn't have to stand out here in the freezing cold. And they couldn't care less about giving these folks phone call. So you got three different forms to fill out, white, yellow or pink, four against undecided. There's about another 50 more people that are standing out in front of the building out there that are out protesting with signs out on the side of the road right now. What was it? It was white, yellow, blue and pink, right? White, yellow and blue is.
Which one's against? Yeah, which one is against?
The pink.
Okay, so that's all we need to know.
So this is what they call being, how you say, allowing us our constitutional freedoms here. I will talk the whole time I'm in there. So I guess they're trying, I guess I'd be at enough of a distance out here and complaining about they're gonna let me in. They're trying to let me in. I would love to be able to get all the testimony on file for you guys. I even brought my own pretty little mask to wear while I'm inside. Just so you know, I'm all for making Alaska great again. Oh, this is why I have a mask is because I am first set a consistent basis to work in Anchorage. And 90% of the businesses I have to go into require me to put a mask on before I'm allowed into their building. Otherwise, I can't do the job that pays me. So that I can afford to be out here doing what I'm doing right now. Speaking of which, go to my website, politidick.com and click that donate button. I'm on my way in.
Stand by, all gentlemen. See the second row? Go set at the far end and you can videotape the proceedings quietly.
So are we taking, can they testify under both?
Yes, someone can testify under both. Audience participation is to testify on matters that are not pertaining to the ordinance. If the testimony tonight under audience participation is about the ordinance, we will ask the audience to wait, hold that testimony until the public hearing is open for that ordinance. So Eugene, please, excuse me, if you want the justification?
Yes, exactly.
If your only testimony is regarding the ordinance, then you will wait till the public hearing. If you have testimony that you would like to speak about and it's not regarding the ordinance, you have three minutes right now to speak on that. You will have three minutes also during the public hearing to speak on that.
Because I was instructed that you follow my lines, I'll just, I'll be moved to the first one. And I'm not here for the ordinance.
Yes, so let me go check the microphone. Okay, just go check, just move up the microphone.
Because the instructions were once times, that's it, and then there's two steps.
I have to go, sir.
When you open up first, and I'll pick that, and then you'll appear. I'll wait till the first part, I'm not, okay, okay. At most, I think I'm just going to leave over there for a bit, okay? Okay, fine. Let me start my call.
Okay.
And respectfully, the comments are pertaining to how you run the meetings and where you want to do this.
Okay, perfect. Yep, that's perfect, Eugene.
Okay, ready, set, go. Anybody who can call in, I follow the process. When the process is done appropriately, decision made by the governing body will act as public. While the concern is you having operation in this room tonight or any night in COVID. I plead with you before, the whole of these meetings respectfully, the safety of everyone, the borough senate changes. That will allow a situation where borough senate meetings over there, people didn't have to wait for seven minutes before the start of the meeting to be allowed in, restricted to so many people and severe temperatures, it's impossible to wait to go. So I understand your concerns of safety and all that. Of respect, you're creating an environment where the public is more and more frustrated when you limit the situation for the people to participate. I'd also like to say this, the process, again. Respectfully, the standard has been that at these meetings, those who cannot attend, they're allowed to provide with the comments and there's a deadline to come in. Before the start of the meeting, over to my left over there, there will be a copy of that. It wouldn't be available online, but it had to be in this room for you, the public, to have a copy of those comments. Well, tonight, there's a copy of those comments there. Hundreds, I understand there's hundreds and hundreds of people that are gonna be speaking, provide comments, and you read the record. The public cannot see that on the website to what the people said. There always gonna be limited, the standard is again, process, limited to what is being read to the record and limited to a situation where the public does not have a fair grasp of what's been said and been sent in. Uh, this is not a procedure that should have happened. But I also like to stress this thing, there's about one minute five seconds. There has been concerns in Anchorage about having those meetings closed to the public, that they had to be at a distance. They have telephonic. They're open now so they can go in there. Thank God for that. They also provide telephonic. But the city council Palmer finds a situation that you're holding meetings without the option for people to call in to testify or you to call them. This is not the way to operate. In Houston, the people can connect by phone and call in and speak. In the borough, they can do that. In Anchorage, they can do it. How possibly can you hold meetings in this situation? You always increase more frustration and anger because you fail to respect the need to the public to be connecting with you before you make decisions, whatever the decisions are going before you. And so I say to you tonight, and respectfully, is it not the way to go? And this is a fact has been for Palmer, the way you follow.
So you're just assuming that everybody that's out there is for the public hearing? Is that what we're assuming? Did you get that confirmation? Yes, ma'am. Okay, all right. Is there anybody else under audience participation? Close audience participation. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing on ordinance number 20-016 in acting an emergency mask or face covering mandate. Does any of the council, one staff inform, or persons before I open the public hearing? Saying no one, I will open the public hearing. Okay, Eugene, you're first on the list.
We appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
You ready?
I'm ready. He's ready.
My name is, if you call in, I'll listen about, follow the public process. And the public process, unappropriated decision made by the governing body is more like the public. As the public knows, I attend a lot of meetings and have years of presence in what you all do. But my address to these three is related to what's before you, before you run the ordinance, the public emergency mask requirement. Up to now, the situation in the borough, like the borough senate and those police powers, so they cannot, could not implement a mask requirement unless it was in borough buildings. But there was the option, an opportunity for both Palmer, city Palmer and Houston to address that issue. And I went before you when I replied that and I asked you all to introduce a proposal for mask requirement. And the response at the time was not too long ago, it was silenced and was put off. And that concerned me. Meanwhile, other committees are dealing with a mass situation like Anchorage. And they're dealing with, with the weirdest question of how many people do they have beds for to take care of that they want in the hospital and deal with COVID. And some of those people will be these people from the valley. Now, the valley's been a while, but we're west on this issue. Now, the valley's been a wall of the west on this issue, as we've heard today, and we witnessed it. More so than the still living, Palmer. And it needs to be, as I said before the act of assembly in the borough senate, those who request being masked are confusing freedom with responsibility. Now, I attend meetings here, where there's very few people in this room, in the public. And I witnessed, as patterns until tonight, where almost everyone from the, that before did, was not wearing a face covering. Now you're proposing a face covering, and when, up till now, in this room, you were not even wearing face covers. Why are you doing, why are you bringing it, are you gonna comply with your own proposal? That's gonna be a question. Because right now, you're not complying with that, with, your neighbor right here is not wearing a face covering. Isn't that ironic that the rest of the public could decide to, to discuss this issue, but you yourselves in the flip right now, not wearing a face covering? Now, one thing you can do, even before proposing this ordinance, is at least show a leadership role. Okay, this is important, your face covering. But you're proposing something here tonight, and you yourselves, some of you are not doing that. So it's telling already some of the public that we don't think it's important. While you're a governor with us, too. So, uh, I'm concerned that this conversation encloses, that you are now the public, but your way is not gonna be fair and will be frustrating everyone that's concerned about this issue. Thank you.
They need speakers in here. They need speakers in here. They need speakers, a microphone that actually lets you hear.
Brad, we need, we need the list, we need, I need the list.
I signed it right after.
I know, I need, I need the list. Brad, I want the list.
Yeah, I'm close to a hundred people outside right now, sitting in freezing temperatures, waiting to come in for this event, um, to be able to testify here today. Um, it is subzero temperatures outside, just a short time ago, I was out there, I've lost feeling in my fingers and toes. There are three different lists, yellow, pink, and white, depending on who you are and what you stand for.
There was a pink sheet that was, everybody's name was on. Where's that at? Thank you. I understand that.
Depending on which seat you sign, whether you're for, against, or neutral.
My name is Mike Cruz, I live on Lacey Mountains, I'm speaking for myself and am president of the Matthew chapter of AMAC Action. Depending on final vote on this ordinance, those votes will show who the socialists are on this council. Those votes will be remembered as condemning socialism in the city of Palmer, and all that vote, yes, will be violating their oath of office to defend the constitution. The China virus is being used as a political tool by socialists, not just in the lower forty-eight in Anchorage, but by any and all socialists in any elected or bureaucratic position. Sure, there's been a spike in new cases. We have now tested over eight hundred fifty thousand, when our total population is only seven hundred ten thousand. So duh, that amount of testing will show people that we're asymptomatic. So those votes stay home and get well. The death rate in the Matthew borough is zero point two of one percent. The percentage to those tested whom are positive is only four percent. That is, as of fifteen November, cumulative since testing began. Make no mistake about it, this is a straight on attack on leading people to control what we do. This assembly has a past history to find the law and fill the rights, as in trying to stop the ability to carry concealed or open carry. Now we have an even worse attack on our freedoms, that of being able to freely assemble, plead at cars, thread mires, for the noise and use, et cetera, as we choose. This would force us to wear masks and do not, do not have the proven means of protecting one from spreading the China virus. CDC shows eighty-five percent of those tested were, were positive, were individual mask wearers. Sixty-six percent of stay-at-home in New York City contracted the China virus. It is up to the individual to decide if they choose to wear a mask or not. Our nation is founded on easy choices, and no government, be it a small town or nationally, can mandate and fade away our choices, period. If this does pass, I'm calling for civil disobedience by both individuals and businesses. The city does not have the authority to arrest for not complying. I fully support businesses in Palmer, and I'm sure the vast majority will oppose this travesty. So far, most businesses ask for us, can ask for us to use, wear a mask, but do not enforce those to choose not to wear a mask. If a business denied access, then I would and will boycott that business, and would call on others to do so. A boycott in any business that goes along with this will hurt the sales tax income. I realize that socialists don't care for capitalism or business, but for those assembling members who do, take heed. Your vote be prepared for the adverse outcome of that decision. Thank you.
Thanks, now I have three sheets, so I don't need to, tell you who the third person that signed up.
Yeah, my other couple are gonna rotate each one now.
Okay, so Angie, who's next?
Well, I have, yeah, first, who was, who signed up first? You said, well, yeah, yeah, just, who signed up, who was here first?
No.
I know, I'll just have to ask, okay, go ahead, sir. Who, who signed up first? Yeah, just, who signed up, who was here first? I know, I'll just have to ask, okay, go ahead, sir.
My name is Kevin Turner, I own last decade, there was quite a lot here down in Palmer. After eight months of the pandemic, the people have made a decision whether or not to wear a mask. I wear my mask when and where I can, because I'm infected with throat cancer. So wearing my mask all the time is not an option because I have a sinus allergy. And so there are times that I'm unable to do so, but I try to do as much as I can. But eighty-five percent of our customers wear our masks that come into our store, and about fifteen percent don't. A mandate is not meant to attempt fifty percent wearing masks. All it will do is have them not shop to spend money in our town and in our county. But China can sell to them fifty percent just this month. We received four, four phone calls just this Saturday, asking about the mask mandates. Perception is different than reality. They were coming from Anchorage, and stated that if the mandate was in effect, they would not come out to Palmer. The governor released this week his COVID nineteen headquarters. Within that, private companies and entities are allowed to enact their own requirements regarding face masks. So myself, as a business owner, if I choose so, and anyone else, can do that. Therefore, the city should not need to do so. The original draft of the EO stated businesses and building owners shall deny patents to individuals who fail to comply with this ordinance and shall require or compel removal of such individuals from the premises. As business owners, we are not the mask holder. I spoke with Deputy Mayor Combs, and she indicated that there may be a change from shall to may, which is understandable. But this is in direct, this is in direct conflict with that next part of the ordinance, which says the city deserves the right to use all available enforcement options to ensure compliance with the ordinance. What are the enforcement options, and what are the penalties? Or we can change the semantics if a citation is issued to business, person not wearing a mask, or me, when I'm at the may, ask someone to wear it. So there is pure conflict with each other. It's my belief the ordinance is fully structured at this time, and with all the things required, it makes it difficult for someone to stand in front of you folks and speak from an educated perspective. To me, believe, if the city could not shut us down earlier this year due to the fact that we're a classed city, how can you issue this mandate? How is this different? No one is getting sufficiently explained in this two weeks. I would encourage the city council to make a statement regarding the use of masks. I believe it is more appropriate for a resolution or proclamation to support the governor's statement asking all asics to wear masks. That ordinance is too heavy-handed, and I believe will negatively affect the business climate and reputation.
And now, Brian, were you, were you behind him signing up? Or, who's the girl, were you?
It's him and Peter.
And me.
Oh, you think about your kids. It's him. Then you guys, again, that's like, you're not one. Is that true, that's when we did it, and we do the pin on the chief? Okay, so, sure.
Yeah, sure. Many expedables, I have to live up to that here in Palmer. Um, so I'm a software engineer, which gives me, like, unique appreciation for data, data-driven decisions, which is essentially how we make all this policy, and you know, turnaround the pandemic and everything. I know how easy it is to mess up, I mean, I mess up time and time, but important stuff. And the data around cases, the deaths, the test rates, all this kind of stuff, it's a mess, you can test it this. Um, and the data about if I do this masks is, although it's trending that they are effective, we still don't know. So anyway, the, uh, America is a land of freedom, the home of brave, but there's a group of us that don't really want to optimize our life for safety. Uh, we want a bit. Um, and really, I've always had the safest place in the world is inside a jail cell. So if you want advice for that, you know, we can, we can do that. Um, now, I understand that there's other group of people that need, need to have increased protection from this virus, that need to accommodate them. So the ordinance will probably not change behaviors in a certain way, in significant way. Those who currently wear masks will continue to do so, and those who don't will probably not, they just won't wear it anyway. So consider this, um, this may not be a vote to change the behavior of, uh, all the residents, um, but a vote for you guys staying in office and a vote for, uh, the growth of Palmer. Um, there's no way to change, or control, or protect, as a symptomatic carrier, uh, we're smart enough, we're responsible enough, I set ourselves, no more hires, folks, right? Some of us who, who are around without masks, we're not gonna go there, or if you have them, we're not gonna go there, people are high risk. So people ask, well, why am I just wearing masks? It's the nice thing to do, wasn't a good deal. Um, I'm concerned about the psychological effects of masks. Uh, humans are social creatures, and I came out of smiling, people, it's one of the things that we need to do, it's part of our communication. Um, and wearing a mask basically ensures that. The face is a major point of communication, and science shows that serious mental issues can result from isolation. I've got several family members who can't isolate themselves, have big problems. Um, secondly, because, uh, the face is a major part of speech, could be argued that this face mask enters on their first minute price. Um, so I would like to propose an alternative. Um, instead of doing a seven day a week mask mandate, uh, I want to share a bunch of any days. Those who, um, want to wear masks can go out, it's enforced. Um, and they can move out with actually increased safety, because now those that wouldn't wear the mask anyway, aren't long-term around, and they're gonna be at risk. And then secondly, it allows those of us who don't want to wear masks, who are the oldest groups, to, uh, move around with a freedom of the desire, and, you know, maybe get some positivity going, if you believe in that. So, yeah, that's, that's my speaking, thanks.
Okay, so. My name is Luiz Way, and I am a council member in Health Education and Social Services Division Director for Children and Women Traditional Council. I also currently serve as a board member of the Texas Intimate Valley Children's Care Center, along with two hundred calculated nonprofit boards in the Matthew. My family has not gone out to visit our favorite coffee stands that used to frequent dating near shop at any of our favorite small businesses in Palmer since March. Without a mask mandate being adopted, I am inclined to put my family or the elders and other vulnerable medically fragile individuals that serve at risk to support our local economy. Sadly, there are just too many people who refuse to do their thing and protect others by wearing masks. Unfortunately, initially, the science around mask wearing was unclear and conflicting in the beginning stages of this pandemic. Wearing masks became a political issue, and a strong symbol of a divisive myth of politics in our state and nation. Somehow, asking someone to protect the elderly others became equivalent to taking more to work for the same people. The science around COVID nineteen is becoming clearer every day. Over time, scientists and medical professionals have gained a better understanding of how COVID nineteen spreads and how masks can help slow that spread. The CDC and WHO have stressed that cloth face covering are a critical tool in the fight against COVID nineteen, particularly when everyone wears them. Even the U.S. Surgeon General, Jerome Adams, has stated, "When we can't stay six feet away from others, please, I'm begging you, wear a face covering." Our healthcare system is at a critical juncture and headed towards a crisis point. We have a makeshift facility being set up in Anchorage to handle projected incense numbers of COVID patients. Healthcare facing significant staffing shortages with more than five third hospital staff out of quarantine status at present within our healthcare system except for COVID. Emergency responders are being impacted and may impact their ability to be able to, uh, reach people inside of the hospital. Prophets, who's riding a little more given. We have the tools at our disposal to slow this virus down in our state. However, it only works if everyone knows their duty to protect others. As of Tuesday, thirty-six states have some type of mask mandate in place. So today I am asking you for two things. One, I ask that all Palmer city council members, who are politicians, decide and lead by example by observing social consistency recommendations and wearing masks in public. I've brought you, and then two masks. One says, "Tutatnap," which is honoring our ancestors in our Otanapadat language. And this is because our ancestors survived the nineteen eighteen flu pandemic. And I want to recognize that we, that we think it's important that we share these masks so that other people can recognize that. We want to all survive this one as well. The other one is, "Wotanapet," those will see. And I'm giving these one because this one says, "Living Native Traditions." Our highest value is to love and care for other people. Just as I love and care for Mutha, that's what we call Palmer, I love and care for the people here, I want you to show that you care for them as well. So I brought you a gift of these, and I'll leave it here, so somebody can sanitize them off for you. So I ask that you all lead by example. And then I also ask that you follow the recommendations of our local hospitals and healthcare professionals and mandate a policy requiring masks in public until such time as numbers decrease enough to reduce the strain on our healthcare infrastructure. Right now, I also have a letter that is, I think was emailed in today, it's from South Central Foundation, also requesting that you all adhere to the mask-wearing public health practice. We sit in meetings, uh, all week long talking about this. School meetings, health meetings, daily, I don't, not one day goes by where I don't learn something, or hear new information about what COVID is doing and what it's projected to do. December fifteenth is kind of a scary day we should be thinking about, and I don't want us to get there. I want us to slow things down. So I really appreciate that this was brought forward by the assembly. I, I, I know you're taking a lot of heat for this, and I really hope that it's a quality, as I was, now. So thank you so much for listening to me, I appreciate your partnership.
Because they're having a hard time carrying.
Oh, online, you're having a hard time carrying?
Yeah, I was looking at my final question today.
Good evening, thank you, Lord, for allowing us this time to make our audience to the council. I'm here this evening to voice my opinion, first, my name is Christine, and I hereby ask for Dom, we have been praying for her vote. I'm here to voice my opinion regarding the mask mandate. Since the beginning of COVID, we have all experienced. Since the beginning of COVID, we have all experienced abundance of information on all aspects of what we should and shouldn't do regarding our personal safety. And if you've done your own research, I'm sure that we've all found tons of arguments both for and against wearing masks from the pandemic. With that being said, I feel that at some point, the decision should finally be left up to the individual to do what they do best for themselves and their families without suffering persecution for their decision. I personally experience a great deal of anxiety when wearing a mask for several reasons that I will not honor to go into at this time. But I would certainly not go from the thought of being told that this mandate can't wait till everyone at all times. I work in English and I have to comply wearing a mask in my office. But knowing that I've got the freedom to make my own decisions once I get home to Palmer gives me relief. So I'm stressed from wearing one all day, five days to week. Thank you for your time and I hope you'll consider all sides of the story when you make your decisions to affect all of us. Thank you.
Can you say your last name?
Christine Walden. Thank you.
Okay, um, so JJ Little?
I think Don's next, actually.
Hold on.
Hey, so my name is Don Moffin and I live here in Palmer. And a lot of people base their decisions on some of the studies out there. Most of those studies are based on laboratory studies on the effects of how face coverings block the droplets. Then they plug in some assumptions and create a model. And that model then tells them what the effectiveness is of preventing the spread. What they don't consider is how normal people use masks. So I have a CDC study here that was released just this September. And this study shows that masks and face coverings are not effective in preventing the spread of COVID-19, even for those people consistently wearing them. This is the data behind the mask here, this study. And basically, they had three hundred and fourteen people either tested positively or have the symptoms of COVID but tested negative. And the results were very simple ones. How often did you wear a mask? People that never wore a mask, three point nine percent. People that rarely wore a mask, three point nine percent. People that sometimes wore a mask, seven point two percent. People that often wore a mask, fourteen point four percent. And people that always wore a mask, seventy-one percent of those people had gotten COVID. So the study shows that wearing a mask is not only ineffective, but sometimes is counterproductive to spread it. So I'll demonstrate to you what I see every day of people wearing a mask. So I'm wearing my mask. So the mask is blocking the droplets. So where are the droplets going? They're going into the mask. The mask is now a germ sponge. And what are people doing? Like this is what they're doing. You're touching the mask. You're screwing around with it. Are you sneezing into it or coughing? No, you're not. You're pulling it away. So then you're constantly touching this germ sponge. And then what are you touching after that? You're touching the table. These germs can last up to ninety days. So I would say that these masks are not only don't prevent, but actually work based upon the CDC study. So look at the cases in the cities that have mandated the mask. Cases are going up, not down. Does the city, does this city want to accept that liability of mandating wearing a mask or face cover? Because after all, this is all done, the murders are the ones that are unsettling. Does it make, don't make the decision on speculative science where they plug in numbers for some sort of a, uh, the results. Base it upon the basis of the results of what we see. Let's keep the decision responsible and liability with the people and business owners, not based upon the government. So in this particular circumstance, I'm pro-choice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. This is my first opportunity to come here and speak. You know, for my guess, I'm a retired military member. I live here in the community of Palmer. And I think for the opportunity to be here this evening and be able to speak with you, I also want to thank those that are standing up for COVID. If you've had a help with this, I think Brendan is his name. And I appreciate his, that I first could try to get everything on the list to get it in here. So thank you so much for your time.
Can you say your name, please?
My name is JJ Little. I'm at ninety-eight fifty East Stand Drive, Palmer. I think there's a couple of things I wanted to look at. Because I've never done this process before, the first thing I wanted to do is go ahead and pull up the Endeavor Report for us today. And one of the things that I highlighted was the governor issued an emergency alert asking citizens remain diligent, social distancing and masking. Asking citizens, I think is the highlight there. It goes on to say the CDC recommends wearing masks, which are defined as N95 masks, or face covering homemade or commercial, all except in condition to maintain six feet at distance. It says in line with his recommendations, I'm sure that means this recommendation or his, I don't know if they're talked about in the document, the governor or the CDC. But in this case, we continue on the city council has authority to issue a mask mandate. A mask mandate means essentially a required. I believe we're leaning forward a little bit on this. But I, one of the positive questions of council for their consideration, what is a mandate of health and when should it be used? To define mandate, I think we first need to look at the word Latin, this mass, which means hand or bear to give and consider to command or a order handed down from superior to subordinates. Mandate should mean two requirements. I think if we're going to use it, one of them has an opting out requirement requires an action beyond saying no. And secondly, a defined enforcement mechanism should be in place. I don't think that we have that very well. I would encourage you all to relook at that if you have the ability to do so. Number two, does this local ordinance, in its attempt to stop the spread of COVID, cross the line of appropriate exercise and authority, creating in effect an overbearing infringement of constitutional and statutory protections? When considering these things, we have two aspects of this. One, our individual rights and public health. Public health includes things such as medicine, science, politics and sociology. There are two ones that I'm going to kind of hit on today. I only have thirty seconds left, so this is great evidence of effectiveness for face coverings that's not available by the CDC. In other words, it is unspecified. That means it has some, but not a defined amount. The sociology aspect of this, defining communities by creating a manufactured line of division is the other thing that I'm really concerned about. Current CDC guidelines are clear that no enforcement of any sort of face coverage is envisioned. The terms mandatory mandate requirements do not appear on its website. And final question that I had is should public health intervention be mandatory? I guess I'm done. Thank you all so much. This is my first time doing it and I appreciate you all. I'll be praying for your servant, your, and your decisions in this. And I look forward to talking to you all in the future.
Hey, so Janet, and we believe you are a compelling candidate for your position. Hi.
Hi.
Uh, I'm Janet Lee Dave. I'm a resident of this city, but I claim Palmer is my home and have since nineteen sixty-two. And I would like to say I am one of those people that's a person of bad, got diabetes, I had a heart attack, I had a stroke, you know. But I choose not to wear a mask. I need every breath I can take, but I totally respect those that do. And when I see people in a mask, I try to keep the appropriate distance. But it is my choice. And that's, I think, the big thing I want to emphasize, it's my choice. We've been in business since nineteen seventy-six, probably the longest standing alone business in the valley. And as such, we're not getting rich. I'll let my daughter guess that because she had a little grit and I own a column in. But I'm telling you that everything that we share is business is not good. I don't think we're angry, I take pride in the fact we're not angry. But I certainly don't want to see a lonely ass that came out of there. And the last thing that I really bothers me is fear. When you make a mask, mask mandate, it could just fear. And I'm worried for the younger generation that are afraid. I'm old, doesn't matter. But I see the fear of never been afraid and I don't want to see it perpetrated. I think our media is doing a good enough job that we don't have to add to it. So I hope this ordinance goes down quickly. Thank you. Right there, right in the tongue, there are plenty of seats here in the back that you have, you know. We could, yeah, we could bring probably another four people from outside or if they could stand. It will bring some other people in because it's a whole house, so.
My name is Michelle Kinke. I'm one of the co-owners of the Valley Hotel, the Twenty-four Seven Hotel Parade, the Blue's Lounge and the Iron Horse Circle Store. We also own the Kozlowski Center, the houses retail and professional businesses. We employ about forty-six people on average. We are against the mask mandate confused by square towns and jailbreakers. Housekeeper's got a choice on where you want to go. Ostracizing Palmer by this mandate will only push them to go outside of our city limits. How many of you have overhead maker payroll here or business in the city of Palmer? Do you understand the economic effects that that will have, especially with this right here on the corner? It's very stressful thinking about the impact this will have. It's very stressful looking at staff reductions due to this mandate. I anticipate that this mandate goes through, we will lay off between ten and twenty of our employees. The citizens of Palmer and the surrounding areas are much smarter than you think. We are educated and everyone has made changes in their lifestyle to slow this spread. Anguish with their mask mandates seems like the same or higher ratio of COVID compared to others. Please look up the comparisons that gentlemen before we give you all of the great statistics. My heart goes out to anyone who has lost hope from COVID. I'm sure all, or not all, but most have underlying conditions. You know, if you're one of those and you take the extra steps according to your own needs. My mom, she had a heart attack in December, a stroke in March and several other underlying items. She's eighty-six and she makes her own educated decision not to wear a mask. When Anguish started their failed mask program, our Anguish customers increased coming out to the valley. Again, people have a choice of where they want to go. A lady stopped by the desk and she told me how nice it was to see people, hear them laugh. And she even said she liked people smiling and didn't mind even hearing the children that might be screaming. She really appreciated paying care without a mask. We do not need the city council mandating how we live our lives. We do not need the city council copying and pasting failed going out to Anguish. We do not need some of the city council and their affiliated groups using shame and tactics for social media filming. We do not need some of the city council pushing a progressive liberal agenda. We need city council members that stand for what all the needs of Palmer are. We don't need city council members that want to push something on their own agenda at any cost. I've heard that if somebody wanted to shorten the ordinance's time, then that would cheap the public out of knowing or letting their voices be heard. Wearing masks, it's a personal choice. For the sake of privacy. Council members stand strong against this mandate. Thank you and God bless the United States of America.
Okay, um, Jaclyn?
Hello, my name is Jaclyn Goforth. I'm a writer and I'm also a researcher and I do deep research. When I found out that masks were used as an agent of social control in Liberia, I bought the book. Masks do not work. The mask box says so. It says right on it that it will not prevent the spread of coronavirus. If masks work, why can I find this chart that says that nineteen of the top twenty hotspots have had a mask mandate? Richard Ursel, a thirty-two-year-old board certified physician, certified, has said that masks, to use a virus, uh, to stop a virus, is like throwing sand against a chain link fence. He also said that they carry a lot of bacteria that can cause things on your face like jock itch and yeast infections. The CDC used to have a section on it about cloth masks. It says that cloth masks do not filter anything. Moisture caught in the mask becomes mildew ridden in thirty minutes. Dry coughing, enhanced allergies and sore throat are all symptoms of micro mold. Mandatory masks are against human rights viola, they're a human rights violation. In the aftermath of World War II, the Nuremberg Code was signed and addressed human rights violations. This code was later codified with the UNESCO two oh oh five statements. It was signed by eighty-three countries, including ours. Article six, section one says, "Any preventative, diagnostic and therapeutic medical intervention is only to be carried out with the prior, free and informed consent of the person concerned based on adequate information." In closing, I have this packet. This is a claim for damages arising from negligence and possible conspiracy by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the National Institute for Allergy and Infectious Diseases and the Inspiring Association, Associations, which, if you do a mandate, includes you. This form is going to be accompanied by a standard Form ninety-five. This is a tort claim against the government for damages. And as a fact, I have a list of Palmer City Council members, their contact info and their address to mail the completed packet. Should a mask mandate be enacted, my team and I will personally place these packets in every business that allows it and we will do our utmost to make certain that every Palmer resident has the opportunity to file a claim. You have my word. Thank you.
Uh, is Peter in here? Is there a Peter that comes there to get signed up? A Peter?
Eric.
Or Eric? Okay. So is there a Peter? Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, the first thing for bringing this up, uh, no offense, I think it's a little bit too late.
Please say your name.
I didn't hear anything. I think we're a little bit behind the ball on the mandate myself. There's two things that we're gonna hear that we seem to need to hear all the time. If it's against our rights to wear a mask or mandate one, then it's violation of the constitution. The problem with the virus is it's politicized. It's a public health issue. It's not a political item to be described on a political level. It has been proved time and time again that masks are not intended to stop anything. They're not the cure. The side of your attention is to stop the minute. The whole point of the mask is to slow the transmission rate of the virus. Our medical community's been begging us for a long time. The state has been promoting this for a long time. We can't even adhere to that outside the doors of this chamber to what everybody's recommended to slow this virus down. We're all guilty of it right out here. There's no social distancing stuff. We can only blame ourselves for not acting sooner to mandate some kind of face covering ordinance as a temporary measure to help slow the transmission rate. It doesn't have to be a mask, doesn't have to be anything surgical. All it's doing is slowing droplets from traveling a certain distance. I think, I think that we're behind it. I think that we can't necessarily backtrack and start enforcement on citizens. I think honestly, the only way that we can control it as a government as a temporary measure is to put the mandates on the businesses where mass people exchange. And that's my opinion. Because there's no way to enforce ordinance on citizens when you can't control it outside the door of the chamber. There's no way to enforce it other than fines the businesses for not adhering to the policies that have been recommended by the medical communities for months and months and months. The only next thing that's coming down the pipeline is a mandatory business shutdown of everything. And that's gonna, we can't afford another one of that. People up here are promoting it, uh, their businesses that they're gonna lose out. But what's gonna happen with it if it comes from a higher level than all businesses that shut down? That's. That's, that's more detrimental down the road than a simple measure of simple face covering that plays into your people's lives. That's what I can say about it.
So, that, so there's all, you're here. Okay, all right, well, we will go on to the people then are here.
Hi, I'm John Johnson. Uh, usually try to write something serious to say for, uh, just in a public comment, but what can you really seriously say about this? You know, uh, I see, I was wondering where all the city council was when I walked in here, I guess they're, they're at home. Uh, you know, it's, I had these comic books when I was a kid, GI Joe comic books, and there's a secret meeting of the Cobra Commander and everyone's wearing masks, just like this, and people around, you know, bad guys around the world are up on the screen. I don't know, just thought of that when I walked in here and saw all this. But anyways, as far as, as far as, try to say something serious about this, I mean, there's no legal authority for, for you to do this. There isn't. There is no legal authority for you to do this, and, I mean, it's, uh, it's kinda like Andrew Jackson said, uh, to the, to when he made the legal decision in court, he said he made the decision, now enforce it. I don't want to see this enforced, they're out here enforcing it. It'll be impossible to enforce, and, I mean, I, I just don't want to be thinking. Besides that, and I'm surprised it hasn't happened across the whole United States, there's gonna be a wave of lawsuits from all the businesses, and hopefully the individuals and families of this kind of thinking is damaged. You know, drug overdoses, deaths, they're up across the country because of the lockdowns and because of this kind of thinking, and, you know, as businesses start to fail and everything, I hope that there's class action lawsuits, um, against, against cities who do this sorts of things. So, let's not be Palmer, not city, let's not be like Anchorage. Palmer's driving right now, because we're not like Anchorage, so why, why are we trying to be more like Anchorage and go down the road a little bit, so, so that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Okay, uh, Cole?
Thank you. My name is Cole Gaster. I'm a local resident of the Palmer area. I, uh, counsel for appearing tonight, like it freezes most, if that's all right. As a local resident and as someone who's been in and served the community throughout the COVID-19 virus, and was almost getting tested, I think it would be status for our community, especially economically, to mandate the use of masks, considering the COVID-19 pandemic due to COVID. First point I would like to make is the fact that our wonderful state in general, and the town of Palmer specifically, was started and built on the idea that individual liberties combined hardware are paramount to create a good of our society, and the belief that those two things are essential to our, to provide progress is best, is the best bet for a healthy, thriving economy. That's not changed. Sickness can come and go, so those principles are immutable. Second point I would like to make is that the CDC data itself proves that over seventy percent of those who wear masks religiously still find themselves getting sick. That is not a very good statistic on which to make a mandate that is likely to hurt our local economy. Best solution, as it has always been, is to let individual liberties reign and let those business owners who feel that they should require masks do so, and those businesses who don't continue to not, and you will find that in the end, the best interest of the whole population will be served, as it has always been through history and the other circumstances of human populations that have come. Our economy faltered, defrailed, and efforts all of us for a very long time in defending the current effect. I would also like to respectfully remind the council of their responsibilities to these amendments. Our Eighth Amendment says neither slavery nor involuntary servitude, except as a punishment for crime or of the party shop, then duly convicted, shall exist within the United States in place subject to their jurisdiction. As far as I understand, Palmer elastic is subject to the jurisdiction of the United States of America, and I have not committed any crime that I should be caused to be a servant to, and be told to do what I have to do with my body as well as others. Also, the Fourteenth Amendment says all persons born or naturalized in the United States without having, and subject to its jurisdiction, are a citizen of the United States and of the state or any adversary. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States. Nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction equal protection of its loss. I respectfully request that the council not, uh, enforce a law which shall abridge my privilege and decision of the United States. With that, I say thank you. Thanks for your time.
Jessica? I'm Jessica. Uh, my name is Palmer Colick. I choose to live in Palmer, because it's a small-town deal. We love it out here. I don't know if you've seen people wear masks locally, but, um, they're on, they're off, their hands are weird, they're on, they're off, they're touching. I need to find it better and safer, um, almost to just wash our hands and not be aware of or smelling. Wash our cars, I think, always. Wash your hands when you get home, have your kids wash their hands. Um, you know, uh, be healthy. I feel like these are things that we do more, right? As far as masking it for Palmer, I don't agree with that. I feel like if a business is wanting to mandate their customers to wear masks, let the business choose that. Um, I choose to shop at Palmer Local, I love Palmer's local Palmer stores. Um, it's a huge turn off to me, to make me wear a mask to shop in your local, but if that's their choice, that's their choice, we're part of our business, I can respect that. I personally know two businesses in Palmer that do not want this mask to go through. I fear that they have a fear that they might have to close down these businesses. Palmer can't really afford that. It's not really a lot, but we can go there. Small, and I appreciate that. One other thing that I have noticed and am aware of is we've been able to keep our school, specifically Swanson, who was a K through two school, who isn't required to wear masks. They have minimal closures, they have two classes have to be required to close, and I think that's important. I find that very important for our kids, they need to be in school. I'm a mom with three boys who have remained and are very involved in local sports, and I appreciate that, but I also question, do I want my kids wearing a mask while they are working out and, and on the ice or, you know, on the field or coming around? I feel that that's just so unhealthy and, this would be impossible, I, I can't without it. I don't, I don't like this doing that. There is, you know, other things that get trapped in there and other, I just, it's awful, but I respect people's citizens to wear masks, and I just hope that you guys can respect ours, who, us who don't want to wear them, and don't make this a mandate for Palmer. Let us choose.
Leah Jones?
Hi, I'm Leah Jones. I am also a resident in the Palmer area, and I would like you guys to consider some things I'd like to say. I am in opposition of the mask mandate. The first thing that I would like to talk about is, um, I hope that you guys can take into account what people are saying here today and, um, make a decision that's gonna be best for our community as a whole. I, um, have chose to live in the Palmer area, I work in Palmer, and I could just go to school in Palmer, and that's a choice. Um, I feel that, um, or I've heard that this mandate has been, um, you know, copied upon the Anchorage mandate, and, um, Anchorage is a big city, Palmer is a smaller city, um, and I think a lot of people choose to live and be here for that purpose. If I wanted to live in Anchorage, I would live there. Um, I just don't think that this big city mandate is a one-size-fits-all for every city. The other thing I would like to talk about is also the small businesses to think about how this is going to affect them. Um, again, let it be their choice to, um, you know, choose whether or not they want their, um, customers coming in to wear masks. Um, you guys state that it's going to be on the business owners to regulate this and enforce this, and I don't think that that's a very good idea to pit the community against each other. Um, I believe that the business should have the right to choose what requirements they ask the people to shop at their stores. I also do a lot of shopping. Um, I pride myself on shopping local, and I know a lot of people do, um, and with the holidays coming up and businesses already having a hard time, I just don't think that this is very responsible kind of city to do that. Um, I also like you to consider how this is going to affect our local churches. There are many, many churches in the city limits of Palmer, and, um, I just can't fathom quite in my head how my local church is going to have our worship service if this is enacted. Um, for every single person to be twenty-five feet away from each other without a mask, um, most churches don't have a facility large enough for that to happen, and I'm just not quite sure how it's gonna work out to be able to hear somebody with a mask over their mouth trying to sing to the congregation with a microphone. Um, so, please think about that, and it is everybody's right to, um, religion and worship and do the things that they want to in their churches. Um, the other concern, very large concern that I have is how this is gonna affect, um, the schools, specifically Swanson, which is a K through two. Currently, the Masson School District has not required face masks for those children. That school is within city limits. I think that it's beyond the reach of the city to be able to tell the school district how my child, um, you know, should have to wear a mask or not when they have already decided that it hasn't. When the governor's handy came out, the school came out with a decision and said that they were not going to reverse the mask mandate for the K through two. They were gonna keep kids in school, and in fact, that school has had very minimal closures due to COVID, and I think that you guys should take that into account when making your decision. Um, I did contact the principal at Swanson and brought it to their attention, that they had no idea that this was coming up, so they were going to be discussing it, and I hope that, um, however that works out, that, again, I just, I don't think it's right that you guys, and it's wrong what this school district says. Um, again, uh, I would like to thank you for your time and listening to me, and, um, just ask again that let the community of Palmer continue to make their own decisions on how to handle this COVID situation. Let the businesses make their own decisions, and let people continue to support and love the community that we live in without government overreach or power. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Tony Loder?
Yeah, that's it. Oh, did you say Loder?
Yes, it looks like, I think it was like L-O-S-T-I-R.
Oh, it's L-O-S-I-E-R?
I know, it's I-E-R at the end, I'm on that. It's your job.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, let's start there.
Okay, John Loder. Hello, Eve.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, thanks for hearing us out, and, uh, my, my understanding, my name is John Loder. I'm against the mandate and, uh, the mask mandate. On short notice, without any preparation of notes, and I would say, based on my understanding of the mandate, this is a by proxy encroachment on personal liberty. Uh, as, as a few have already mentioned, by putting the impetus on local businesses to enforce this, uh, and punishing them if they don't, uh, there, there's a great likelihood that, that, um, businesses will be fined beyond a reasonable way to repay those fines. And, and local sentiment, uh, if you, if you can already tell based on, on the lines, uh, is that people, even if this becomes, uh, even if this mandate passes, uh, nobody's going to respect it. Uh, and, and businesses are either going to suffer because people aren't gonna shop there, or they're gonna suffer because they'll be fined until they, until they can repay the fine, so. Yeah, another thing that, as was mentioned, is the unreasonable distance between individuals that they need to maintain. Uh, for a, a virus that has a mortality rate lower than secondhand smoke, lower than infant mortality, uh, you have a greater chance of dying just by being born than by dying from, from, from this virus. Keep that in mind as you're trying to take, take away our right to choose whether or not we put something over our mouth, which also causes health issues, as, as you've heard tonight. So, um, that's, that's, that's my, my take on it. Uh, I agree that people cannot practice religion in a reasonable way, uh, they can't go to church in a reasonable way, as is tradition for many people. Worship is impeded. I agree with that a hundred percent. And to, to say that somebody can remotely attend my service, it, it just reflects a misunderstanding or a disrespect towards, towards a person of religious freedom. And that's, uh, that's all I have to say.
Hello, Ellie?
Yes, okay. Hi, my name is Ellie Loder. So, I'm really against this mask mandate because what I think is the mask, with lots of people wearing the COVID mask, actually, doesn't really help you block the disease if you're gonna pass even diseases, you know, things you're gonna catch anyways. So, I really don't think the mask can help you, so I think we should let people choose either they have it to wear the mask or they don't, you know, wear it, it becomes a freedom for people to choose, that's what I think. Because it really, the ones we're having right now, actually, does not really help. A mask is N95, which is the, which is the medical term used, and like, it's not gonna help you, you know, protect you from diseases. That, uh, thank you.
Okay, is there a bird in here?
No. I'm from, um, I'm from the Valley. Um, I think this mask mandate is something that does not need to happen. I conduct business throughout the entire state of Alaska. I am constantly on the go. Um, my main business was within Anchorage. Uh, that has changed dramatically since COVID has struck and the mask mandate has been put into place. Most of the companies and businesses that I used to do business with are no longer in business. They got shut their doors permanently. They are part of the sixteen thousand people that have lost their jobs, not including the thirty percent that have lost their businesses within Anchorage alone. When we are to go statewide, we are looking at over forty-four thousand jobs that will not be here by the end of this year. We are looking at a thirty-five to forty percent business loss in the small business industry. If it wasn't for the Valley right now, I would be on the food line. I would be asking for help from my welfare or something along those lines so that I would be able to feed my child and make sure that they are able to survive. The Valley has kept me alive. Why? Because all the businesses and people that live within Anchorage are coming out here distributing their money left and right, which means that they're putting an over surplus on the stuff that I service within this community, which means that my calls have gone through the Valley or the Valley. It has made up, not completely, but it did make up a large portion of what I had lost in revenue coming from Anchorage. I cannot name how many businesses I am so sad to see lost within Anchorage because of the mask mandate. And here, that we have a group, a private group here in the Valley, made up of about two-hundred-and-fifty people that have created their own page. made up of about 250 people that have created their own page, that have made this day happen, that this is being pushed by very far progressive left leaning people that are trying to instill the same mandates that Anchorage has put into place. That, if you have been to many of the protests and rallies that have been out, who sat library because of what they have done. If you think what is going on outside in sub-zero temperatures is a little bit outrageous, just wait. It was only going to get worse if we closed down our city here in Palmer. I don't want to see my business go bankrupt. I don't want to lose what I have available to me to be able to earn it in time. If you do put a mask mandate out here, I'll guarantee it, you're going to lose the businesses here in Palmer. The few customers that I do have here in Palmer, I doubt that I will be seeing them again because they're no longer going to need my services because their stuff isn't going to break anymore because they don't have the flow of customers coming through their doors. Anchorage is paying a price. Do you really want to see Palmer do that too? Thank you.
Okay, Kenneth Johnson? And Eric, if I could ask you to leave, please, because as people testify, we're asking them to leave. So we really feel for the people out there.
Okay.
Thank you. If you can listen to it, it's being taken life on the way.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming. Okay, Ellen Johnson? Tom, is there a Kenneth Johnson out there?
I'm outside.
Thank you. Are we waiting for him to come in? Is there a Russell Rockton?
Hi, my name is Russell Rockton. I'm coming out tonight to exercise my right to come look for the mayor, the deputy mayor, and the city manager in council. So I'm coming out tonight just asking you to really take a look at, for every study that you can find that supports mask use, you can find another one that doesn't support mask use. You know, read a few things from our group called the Swiss Policy Research. Let me just tell you a little bit about them first before I read this. They're an independent, nonpartisan, and non-profit research group investigating geopolitical propaganda in Swiss and international media. SPR is composed of independent academics and receives no external funding. I think that's important as we look at statistics and studies. Are they getting any money? Who's behind it? So here are some things that they found. There's increasing evidence that the SARS-2 coronavirus is transmitted at least indoor settings, not only by droplets, but smaller aerosols. However, due to their large pore size and porbit, cloth masks cannot filter out aerosols. Over 90% of aerosols penetrate or bypass the mask and fill a medium-sized room within minutes. WHO admitted, that is the World Health Organization, to the BBC that its June 2020 mask policy update was due not to new evidence, but political lobbying. We had been told by various sources WHO committed reviewing the evidence have not backed masks, but they recommended them due to political lobbying. This point was put to WHO, who did not deny. An analysis of the US CDC found that 85%, I think this has been already said tonight, infected with the new coronavirus reported wearing masks always. 70.6% or often, 14.4% compared to the control group of uninhibited affected people always wearing a mask, did not reduce the risk of infection. So a few more things here. I think a few people have talked about this, the risks associated with masks. WHO forms a varied side effects such as difficulty grating and skin rashes. Tests conducted by the University of Leipzig in Germany have shown that masks significantly reduce the resilience and performance of healthy adults. And there's severe psychological consequences to mask wearing. I'm obviously against mask wearing. I believe people have the freedom to choose. And I think we should continue that in Palmer. Thank you for your service. I appreciate the work that you do.
Will you get it? Kenneth Johnson? Brad, did we find a Kenneth? Kenneth Johnson?
We didn't.
Will you not? Okay, all right. So, Margaret?
Okay.
And then, John?
I'm here at John's.
You want to know what the car's like?
My name is John Loder, and I live up in Basingount, Palmer. And I've heard the same probably, there are 50 friends and neighbors that live in this valley that have the same excitement. And I've been here in my, I appreciate it all, taking the time to listen to us. I am against proposals for following reasons. Number one, I am 73 years old and have no fear of the coronavirus. I believe I have had it already and not known it, or even similar to a mild, non-disable flu. And I survived. I have been in more than 100 shopping stores and gatherings since the virus outbreak, maskless, when I have, where I have been exposed without concern of non-survival. And the second reason is I believe the CDC statistics given on September 25th, 2020, that I, a 73-year-old, have almost a 95% chance of surviving this coronavirus flu if I contract it. And the survival percent goes up to 99.99% for the young. Almost 50 years old and younger, the survival rate is similar to that of the flu. So 0.2% don't survive, 50-year-olds and younger. So I don't see where the pandemic is and where the big concern is. And the third reason is, and then, there is the oximeter that can tell how much oxygen is in the blood. I check my level with this tiny little inexpensive apparatus that I check whenever I may be feeling a little like I might have something, some symptoms. And if my oxygen blood level is lower than 90%, I better head for the hospital because I'm going to need some attention from a doctor. So because of all these things and many others that we've heard as well tonight, there is no need for mandatory mask wearing for healthy people. We didn't and we don't act this way about the flu bug or common cold. We just learn to deal with it. Through our American history, we have seen that this, that the sick and ill quarantine and took preventative measures to be healthy. But as long as one is healthy, he could do his best to eat right, exercise, and do all these things, and then just be ready for whatever it is time to go. After three minutes, you went by that.
And then, Brad, do you have a big sheet for me? Because I only have one more thing on this sheet.
Good evening. My name is Mark Loder. I live up in Basingount. I've been Palmer area since 1996, as a resident. And I am very concerned about this proposal. I'm a business owner and I do not want to have to mandate masks for my customers. I don't wear one myself. I feel very sick when I do. And so I don't think that we should have to, our customers have to wear masks. We are smart people. We've been dealing with this since March. And if we look at the statistics, I just mentioned the CDC before I came. And most of the deaths have already happened. Now people are just getting sick. And we've been dealing with this. So the pandemic really is over. It's just a loose term. And the CDC says that, I looked at the states and how many deaths have been in the states, all the states. And it started out with the most deaths and went down from there. And we're to define Alaska. Atman, Alaska is state number 49 out of 50 states. The only state that has less deaths than Alaska is Vermont. Alaska is a huge state. We know how big it is, with lots of fresh air. We don't need masks to stay healthy. We have fresh air here. And the deaths are almost nil now. There's only been 100 deaths in Alaska. So I don't think that masks are going to help now. And also, I would like you all to write down a website, and please go visit this, and just spend 10 or 15 minutes watching some of the videos there. It's called America's Frontline Doctors. And I would really appreciate it if you would write that down and go visit America's Frontline Doctors. These are all doctors that have decades of experience treating people. And they have all been treating people with COVID. America's Frontline Doctors. And they will tell you their experiences. I watched one on masks just before I came. And this doctor had an example of a man that was wearing a mask that we're all asked to wear, and one that took a surgical mask. And he was working a sheepdog vest, sheepdog. And they took the mask off, and his face was covered in sheepdog dust. And that is a point, I believe it's a .3 size particle. And the coronavirus particles are .0125, which is much smaller than sheepdog dust. So those masks are not doing any good when you're wearing them. So there's a lot more on that website. I would appreciate it if you would look at. Thank you.
Okay, can I have a role? Ronald?
Yeah, that's me.
Would you come and testify, sir?
Say again.
Will you come and testify? Because I'm going to testify next time. Do you have any?
My name's Ronald Downe. I'm a 40-year veteran. I am opposed to leaving the mask mandate for many reasons. Among them, top three. First, science. My wife and I are in the, yeah, my wife is a microbiologist. She, her last post was she completed lab at Providence Hospital in Anchorage. She designed her post. She's left. She left because of the inherent view of absurd ignorance and ignoring of the facts. Germaine, to this mandate, even to the extent that there is a threat from this particular coronavirus, Corona's very common, coronas are nonverbal, there's a lot of hype around it. Please pay attention to the science. But to the extent that there is such a threat, I don't believe there is. But again, to the extent that there is, masks don't help. They don't make any difference at all. Because one type of mask is typically used in the medical field, one. And even that one mask is questionable. Just look at the science. So please pay a look at it and make your decision if you have a measure of readiness. In my own field, as a special ed neurologist, I can also attest to the same. I tend to side with the microbiology standpoint. The science is very clear there. Please pay attention to it. It's easy to find. I realize that's not your industry, but I'm sure you can consult with experts. Secondly, from a legal perspective, from a constitutional perspective, the mask mandate violates the Constitution of the United States. Clearly, it's something I would think that you and your positions would care quite a bit about. Please examine it. It's oppressive. And third, from a personal perspective, for a hundred years, my, both my wife and I have had our business in Anchorage. We have the last two or three years considered a low pass, or our colleagues have done to Palmer area. We would like to do that. With this mandate, we're not likely to. In fact, I can assure you that we won't. Three minutes does go quite quickly, doesn't it? I hope that this mask mandate doesn't become a match that ignites a powder keg because I think you can all sense everywhere in the state, there's a powder keg ready to be ignited. Thank you.
You know, Olivia? Yeah? Yeah, my, and a, oh. A mask, oh.
My name is Lily Leib, and I am here today for the mask mandate and will review it next week. What is my title?
What?
So, I thought a lot of things presented, because the community that we're in here. You know, our government has a history of many people's lives. See, that was, um, panel loss, infant loss, children's loss, we have two, so, food access relief one was, even less regulating the use of alcohol. The laws have all been declared constitutional. Despite the fact that many citizens disagree with that, with their feelings about it is violating their rights. It would appear to me that as a girl and as a city, not enough of our neighbors, our whole community have fighters that are directly members. We have time to thank our executive governments to turn it down. Second, we have to have the citizens. There are nearly 10 months until a timeout, and people are still receiving the knowledge that under the fact that masks do help people with COVID over COVID, which is proven in many countries, in many areas. I am a mother of five children. I 100% believe there are few no choice when there is risk. Despite the fact that there is very, very little risk to wearing a mask and yet people still refuse, claiming that there's a few no choice. My children, my people, I hope to grow because I have engaged mothers in this town. One of my children suffers from Alzheimer's. I'd like to acknowledge that. But frankly, it's hard for many members of our community to seem to like this and really this of little consideration in making the choice to not wear a mask. I hear many say, just keep them home if you're that worried, you don't want them to come with. And then I hear those same voices telling me that my children should be in school because they should be socialized. So I say, keep my child home, keep them away from my relatives, socialize them. And for the matter, obviously, we are all stressed. Year after year, I see posts, I see advertisers, I resolve, it's hard to act normally. If you're being an elderly person, do you expect them to also stay at home and isolate themselves because we can't and go out with our children? I try to hide it to be sheltered without which brings us to be frequent. And every time when I walk into a business, you're in trouble. Now, not only were patrons not wearing masks, their employees were also not wearing masks. And at that point, when I already entered in the shower, it's missed the possibility for contamination to happen.
Go ahead.
First, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to the meeting. I really appreciate it. I'm Michael Oles. And in the National Guard, and I used to work contract security. I don't anymore because the social distancing mandate has put a lot of people out of work for not coming to work or working from home. People working from home, there's no need for security, especially in the federal buildings and different places where there's so few people. These mandates are harsh on the people, and I don't think it's a good idea.
Okay, and Stu?
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Stu. I'll keep it short, because there are a lot of people inside who are cold.
Is there a lot still, a lot?
Yeah. I do not support this mandate. I don't think it's your guys' place to tell us what to do. I think you go to the Congress, you go to Redmires, you go inside the stores, you see ninety-plus percent of the people inside those stores wearing masks. All the employees wearing masks. People, believe in us, believe in the community. It's not up to you to decide what's best for us. It's up to us to decide what's best for the community. That's all I have to say.
Can you say your last name?
Sherman.
Huh?
Sherman.
Hi, I'm John Smith. Ladies and gentlemen, sorry. Sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to say, no. Obviously, long night out there. Don't mean to say too much, if it hasn't already been said. I don't think you probably ever had as much of a turnout as you have today. So I think that should speak pretty high volumes at how many people are, how much they engrossed, bound, and responsibility, and how much they just want to testify that, you know, just let us make our own decisions. And business owners run their business the way they want to run it. And, you know, like our governor said, you quoted in your reason for doing this, leave it up to us, have a personal responsibility to step up and do the right thing. We don't need mommy behind us telling us the weapon knows. And we definitely don't need, you know, an overreaching government following our businesses under penalty of enforcement by our good officers to, you know, you better make sure you're usually safe and not let people come into your store. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having the time and time to listen to me. I just wanted to stand up today and just, you know, hear my opinion heard. I don't believe this is right. I believe this is true. You know, I went, I've been downrange with the military. On multiple occasions, I've fight for freedom of this country, and I believe that today, that is being, they're being sent away out of the past, being blown out. And this is just one more of those things, you know. It's gotten, it's tripled down from a federal level to a state level, and here we are now down to a city. And it's, this is the end result. And I think that this is a very slippery slope, a very slippery slope. Thank you, Governor.
Say your name for the record.
Jesse P.
Jesse. Okay. Um... Say it.
Jen.
Yeah. I can, what's this supposed to say? J U A?
J E N.
Oh, okay. That's all right. Okay.
I'm sorry, what's your name? If anyone's still listening to your testimony.
Good evening. My name is Jen Dennehy, and I appreciate this opportunity to address the handful concerning mask mandates. And I think it's something that should be taken very seriously. There should be consensus, agree with people, decisive scientific evidence, calculation of the risk and reward of businesses, and most important, proof of success when used in other locations in Alaska. Prior to becoming a full-time homeschool teacher, I worked as a nurse. As any care provider knows, one of the prerequisites for patient care is to be fit-tested for respirator masks. This type of mask prevents airborne viral infection, the CDC says COVID-19 is airborne. Per the Occupational Safety and Health Administration's website, a respirator mask cannot, and I quote, "protect you if it doesn't fit the face." It is that simple. During the recent California wildfires, the CDC stated on its website that cloth masks do not catch harmful particles in smoke. This is puzzling, because the harmful particles in smoke are four to five times larger than viruses. The only consistency from the CDC is its persistent flip-flopping on its opinions. Remember, we have been fed contradictory information from the CDC since March, and we as Alaskans do deserve better. With lacking science, we should expect to see widespread evidence of mask mandates being beneficial in Alaska. I compare the data. Anchorage has had stricter lockdowns and mask mandates. The borough so far has let that decision to be the people. The U.S. Census Bureau reports that the municipality of Anchorage has a population about 2.7 times larger than the Massoum Borough. The most recent updates of COVID cases by K2U in their November seventeen evening article reported that four hundred and ninety-seven resident cases came out of the municipality of Anchorage and twenty-six in the Massoum Borough. Even if you multiply the cases to make up for the population difference, you are still looking at a difference of more than four hundred cases. Something is behind the conspiracy. Masks are not the causal link. I believe as Thomas Jefferson so wisely stated, that government is best. That government is best, which government's the least, because its people discipline themselves.
What was it?
I only got a minute and a half though. Our time started at minute fifty.
Did you all have a minute?
Then we'll give you one more minute. Thank you.
Who was that? Okay. You need a minute. Thank you. Yeah.
Just to finish that, so, even if we multiply the cases to make up for the population difference, you would still be looking at those four hundred cases of a difference. So would mandates benefit individuals and the businesses that they frequent? I would argue no. Several large businesses have already mandated masks in their stores, as is their right to do. This year confront undue window on small businesses. The last thing that struggling business owners need to be worried about is how to be the mask police. Don't send the citizens of Palmer to Amazon when they would rather shop locally. Please, it is the holiday season. In conclusion, we do not have consensus by media people. We have contradictory science. Zero causation can be attributed to mandates. So far in our Alaska communities, business owners may suffer the most. We just don't have a basis for enforcement. Let the people of Palmer continue to be a responsible citizen. And I will say it again, as Thomas Jefferson wisely stated, that government is best, which government's the least, because its people discipline themselves.
What was it?
Thank you for having me. My name is Elizabeth Hengel. I'm resident at Palmer. I'm a mother of five and a grandmother of thirteen. Um, I think my, what I wanted to say was longer, so let's cut it short here. Um, I wear a mask if requested or if not fixed or necessary, because I've chosen to temporarily put my comfort aside for the good of those around me. Everywhere I go, I see many, many Alaskans doing the same thing, using common sense and choosing. In my opinion, enacting an emergency ordinance of this kind was severely set back in progress of our community and business owners who may be recovering from the economic shutdown this year. As we have moved to the life of this virus and gaining knowledge on how to respond and mitigate its effects, Palmer business owners have already been some of the most capable at showing the rest of us what to do. Enacting a mask and mandate on the people and businesses of Palmer will not help to mitigate an already difficult and trying time. Business owners will be required to be the G facto enforcers of the mandate. This is an unfair and nonsensical burden to place on them. It will not improve business customer relations. For instance, what exactly does compel removal mean? How will the city of Palmer pay for enforcement of the mandate? Have the costs of the inevitable litigation been accounted for? What if an individual stays therapeutically exempt from wearing a mask or any alternative? Will the gatekeepers of the grocery store ask for proof? Ask for papers? Even more dangerous than this virus is the tendency of poor governance to remove the agency of the individual. And in this atmosphere of heightened fear across our country, this has had severe unintended consequences. It's been a short-term action with long-term negative impacts. It has proven to be curer worse than the disease. Business slowdown or shutdown has created unemployment, poverty, hardship, abuse, neglect, addiction, and the list goes on. Overall, community frustration exacerbated by capricious mandates creates tension and anger, alters and erodes the public peace. These impacts span generations. The inherent rights that each human holds do not diminish or take a backseat during a viral outbreak. I believe that wearing a mask is an individual choice, and it should not be mandated at any level of government. I don't think that there's proof out there, scientific irrefutable proof. There's a lot of conflict. Lady performing talked about the differing things coming out of the CDC and the different health organizations around the world. It's confusing, it's flip-flopping, and until we have something that is concrete and solid and provable, I think this is unnecessary overreach by the government that's going against the mask mandate. Thank you.
Rachel?
That's what it is, but she's not going to testify. I am.
Oh, okay.
So the other max person was.
And are you on this list?
Yes. Rebecca.
Well, we just added one Rebecca.
No, Elizabeth.
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 Oh, oh, okay. Okay, you're right. Okay. You're right. Yeah. Thank you. So Rachel's not on the list.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
My name's Rebecca Gall. Um, I have been in Palmer for twelve years. We bought a house out here and we love it. Um, I am also a foster parent for the Massoum area, and I've been a foster parent for six years. Um, they call us when they have special needs kids. And I'm here to speak to the language in the Anchorage mandate that I'm very concerned about. I don't want that here for special needs children. Um, we, I follow the Anchorage stuff very closely, the church in Anchorage, um, in that area, and so I went to the Sunday school, and I have children, and I have special needs children. So what's very concerning to me is the language in the Anchorage one. Um, I feel like it's very discriminatory for unspecial needs, um, people, and the reason is because I have nonverbal children. Um, I have three on the autism spectrum, and the one is completely, um, he has some looks after, spent a long time repairing him, and he's nonverbal. Um, I took him to find an asthma allergy clinic that we had here in Palmer. Um, I should say it was a couple months ago, and we walked in, and they were in full PPE, they had square masks as well. And he looked at me, and he's very compliant, but he's eleven, embarrassed, sweet little boy. Like, he looked at me, and I could see the panic in his face, and I'm like, it's okay, it's okay. And, but even though he can hear, his ear's not damaged, he's, he's working on facial cues and things like that, and then you can't tell him why he's got to put a mask on. He's not going to understand you. And he's very compliant, and he let the lady put a mask on, but he kept on out, and she didn't even ask me. She just came up and kept like, what's not on? You're touching my kid. That's a whole other thing. But anyway, so, we're in there, and she's in full PPE, and they're asking him to step on the scale. And he's looking at me like, what am I supposed to do? I said, honey, you know, and I just helped him up on the scale. And it was so unfair to him, and it was so discriminatory, because we weren't sick. They took our pictures when we walked in, and I don't want to hear the whole, there's, there's people that are asymptomatic, that are conspiring. That has been this movement. And I am a elderly mother. Anytime, I think, there's any type of symptoms or anything going on, we have social distance. We have protected her, uh, we protect our kids. Um, I have two boys that work at Carter's here in Palmer, and they've been wearing masks since the, the thing went down. But they're seventeen and twenty-one. And you can explain to them why they're wearing masks. So what I've watched happen in Anchorage is that we have some nonverbal people in the community, um, some that really struggle on the far end of the spectrum, that can't understand why they have to put a mask on. And it's, it's like impossible for them. And so they're stuck in their houses, they're being told by people, well, then you just need to keep your, your people, your children, your daughters, wherever they are, you usually need to keep them home, and you need to order your groceries. So these people that can't understand why they have to wear masks are stuck.
It did go.
That's my big concern, is that it's not fair to put this in the lights.
Um, Big Mike?
I'm the president of the Alaska chapter of the Proud Voice, and, uh, one of our things as we get together in the chapter is we like to drink beer in dive bars and talk about how awesome it is to be an American. And part of being an American is understanding the First Amendment. And among the First Amendment are five rights, but none of those rights are the rights peacefully assembled and like petition government for progressive grievances, which is why we're here right now. All right? Peaceably assembled and petition the government for progressive grievances. Well, just because something is a good idea for a disassembly doesn't mean that it has to be mandatory for everyone. Just because I think it's a good idea for everybody to eat pizza and drink beer and wear a Fred Perry polo shirt and a red baggy hat, this means that everybody should do it. You should always do it if you want to. All right? If you are afraid and want to wear a mask, wear a mask. But requiring me to do something for my own good is nothing short of tyrannical government action. My wife is an immigrant. She just got her citizenship a year and a half ago. She escaped a communist country with her parents in Romania when she was a little girl. She came to America to be free and to escape socialism. And now she's afraid that her new country, her adopted country, where she worked hard to earn her citizenship, I was born here, it was an accident of birth on my part. She came here by choice, okay? So if anybody's proud of being an American, certain that might be proud of it is my wife. All right? And now she's afraid that even in the tiny city of Palmer, where we live, it is turning into a tyrannical form of government. There are cities where people are being wrestled to the ground and arrested because they have left their homes and are not wearing a mask. It's happening on Australia, it's happening in Europe, and it's starting to happen here. That can happen in Palmer if we don't stop it before it starts. Now, I'm not saying any of you here had ill designs on the rest of us. I'm not saying that, all right? But it's the camel's net, uh, nose in the tent. Once it starts there, that becomes, we're covering over your head like women in Muslim countries are forced to do. This isn't any different. For many religious people, and I'm an Orthodox Christian, many religious people think that it's a candy, a mark of the beast. You can't buy or sell in a store without this mark. And this is one step closer to that. Please do not do that, because people will resist, they will refuse to obey, and then you're going to have all kinds of problems that you just don't want to have to deal with. And I have a hard time believing that our brave men in blue are going to arrest people for not wearing a useless piece of cloth over their nails and their mouth.
Uh, Karen, too?
What's that? Caroline, my name is Caroline Garman. I'm coming forward today as a advocate of the Palmer community in opposition to mask mandates. I'm here to speak up for the rights of myself, my family, and my community. Media, politicians, and pharmaceutical companies have been pushing a fear-based narrative for months, now about a virus that has a proven survival rate of over ninety-nine point nine percent. They have continuously been called out for botching death counts with outrageous claims playing essentially a calming call for the deaths of terminal cancer patients, car crash victims, bacterial pneumonia deaths, which incidentally is what is caused by wearing a mask for long periods of time, among other ridiculous lies. Thousands of experienced, well-educated scientists, drought theorists, epidemiologists have stepped forward to present honest, unbiased findings contradicting the fear-based narrative that the media and local governments are pushing. We've all heard the case counts, and it is subject to encouragement to get tested. But the governor and mayor are failing to inform their citizens who are being controlled so well by fear tactics, is that when we test more for anything, you will find more in what you're looking for. Especially when the tests are so wildly inaccurate, unable to distinguish between live and dead virus, thus getting many calls for positives. Also, with every positive test, the death toll grows smaller. It has also been proven by well-accredited scientists that the virus cannot be spread through asymptomatic transmission. Also, our local and national hospital capacity rates are five percent lower than last year, so there's no reason to blame the healthcare capacity for any guilt. It's not within the government's rights nor the productive, but actually harmful, to try and force citizens to wear masks or undergo any medical procedures such as the nasal spot test. It's unconstitutional to require anything from our citizens regarding a virus that will never go away, and it's not life-threatening for a vast majority of the population. The suicide rates alone are much higher than any death toll COVID could ever produce. This is truly about safety and health. Start encouraging your citizens to lead healthier lifestyles or boost their immune systems. In closing, I remind you, cities with mask mandates show higher infection rates, including Anchorage. Masks do not protect you, they lower your immune response and cause hypercapnia, which is when you have too much carbon dioxide in your bloodstream from not breathing enough oxygen properly. Thank you for your time.
For many religious people, and I'm an Orthodox Christian, many religious people think that it's a candy, a market, a beast. You can't buy or sell in a store without this mark. And this is one step closer to that. Please do not do that, because people will resist, they will refuse to obey, and then you're gonna have all kinds of problems that you just don't wanna have to deal with. And I have a hard time believing that our brave men in blue are gonna arrest people for not wearing a useless piece of cloth over their nails and their mouth.
Caroline, my name's Caroline.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
My name's Caroline Gorman. I'm coming forward today as a dedicated citizen of the Palmer community in opposition to the mask mandate. I'm here to speak up for the rights of myself, my family, and my community. Media, politicians, and pharmaceutical companies have been pushing a fear-based narrative for months, now about a virus that has a proven survival rate of over 99.9%. They have continuously been called out for botching death counts with outrageous claims playing essentially a common cold for the deaths of terminal cancer patients, car crash victims, bacterial pneumonia dust, which incidentally is what is caused by wearing a mask for a long period of time, among other ridiculous lies. Thousands of experienced, well-educated scientists, doctoring epidemiologists have stepped forward to present honest, unbiased findings contradicting the fear-based narrative that the media and local governments are pushing. We've all heard, "The case counts and it is subject to encouragement to get tested." But the governor and mayor are failing to inform their citizens who are being controlled so well by fear tactics, is that when you test more for anything, you will find more in what you're looking for. Especially when the tests are so wildly inaccurate, unable to distinguish between live and dead virus, thus getting many calls for positives. Also, with every positive test, the death toll grows smaller. It has also been proven by well-accredited scientists that the virus cannot be spread through asymptomatic transmission. Also, our local and national hospital capacity rates are 5% lower than last year, so there's no reason to blame the healthcare capacity for any guilt. It's not within the government's rights nor the productive, but actually harmful, to try and force citizens to wear masks or undergo any medical procedures such as the nasal spot test. It's unconstitutional to require anything from our citizens regarding a virus that will never go away, and it's not life-threatening for the vast majority of the population. The suicide rates alone are much higher than any death toll COVID could ever produce. This is truly about safety and health. Start encouraging your citizens to lead healthier lifestyles and boost their immune systems. In closing, I remind you, cities with mask mandates show higher infection rates, including Anchorage. Masks do not protect you, they lower your immune response and cause hypercapnia, which is when you have too much carbon dioxide in your bloodstream from not breathing enough oxygen properly. Thank you for your time.
My name is Jubilee Underwood, and just kind of wrote this one out there. As an elected official, it is your job to be a public servant. As you have witnessed tonight, many of the public have sat out in the 40-degree weather, me personally, for over an hour, freezing. But to testify that our wishes and our desires are that you hear our voice and not just do what you wanna do. It is my constitutional right to govern my own medical choices for my body. My choice is to eat healthy, to exercise, and to take correct supplements to make sure that my immune system is in working order. It is my choice if I want to wear a mask or not wear a mask. If a private business has a rule, as in the no shoes, no service rule, that is their prerogative to do so. And it is also my prerogative if I would like to shop there or not shop there. That is what a choice is. I would like to know when it has become your duty to govern, how I manage my own personal health. It is not your right as a public servant to tell me how to govern my body or my medical choices. It is against the Constitution for you to tell me what to wear over my face as an American when I'm out on the streets, when I'm in public, to tell me who I can hang with and who I can't hang with, and how many people I can hang with for the holidays or in my own place of worship. There is what's called a peaceable right to assemble. And if you're a public servant, you should know what our Constitution says, you should know what our Bill of Rights say, and if you don't, then you don't have any right to be in the position they are holding tonight. The people have spoken tonight, and they have spoken fairly. It is not your job to mandate our health regulations. If people wanna choose to wear a mask when they go out, they can do so. If people wanna order food services for pickup and delivery, they can do so, because that is the joy of living in America, and that is the joy of being able to have the right to choose. If I choose to go out and risk a virus, that has statistically a 99.7% chance of recovery, and that is also my choice. So I hope that you're listening tonight, because if you do go against the Constitution and our Bill of Rights, we do not have to adhere to what your decision is. And as free Americans, we will not. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joy Davidson, and just to make you guys aware, standing outside for an hour and a half in this cold weather, this shows that people are unhappy about this. For most of you who are new to the city council, I wouldn't expect we'd be lasting very long if we enact such draconian measures on our counties. If one is going to require masks to be worn by all people in their county, one would hope there would be massive evidence to support such draconian measures. Sadly, quite the opposite exists. This is a little chart that I got from a CDC article. So this is the quality of evidence for science. All the evidence that the CDC is using now to tell that the masks are effective are down here. The kind of evidence that is high-quality, and this is not, nobody's, I'm not making this up, are meta-analysis. That's where they take many, many studies, and they look over, and they have random controlled studies. So there is a study, a meta-analysis study from CDC, that says, "Looking at all the studies published from 1946 to 2018, reveals that there was no significant reduction in influenza with mask wear." So we have a huge study that they looked through, and they found absolutely nothing that showed that masks would make any difference at all. And so to impose something like this on us when there are studies after studies that show that it makes absolutely no difference, who, on June 5th, 2017, have presented, "There's no direct evidence on the effectiveness of universal masking of healthy people in the community to prevent infection from, with respiratory viruses, including COVID-19." That's WHO. Masks are harmful to the wearer. Recent studies found that about a third of the healthcare workers developed headaches with the use of masks. Most had pre-existing headaches that were worsened by the mask wearing, and 60% required pain medications for repeat. It is known that the N95 masks worn for hours can reduce blood oxygenation as much as 20%, which can lead to a loss of consciousness. The importance of these findings is that a drop of oxygen level actually is associated with impairment in immunity. So now you're lowering your immune system. This occurs because hypoxia increases the level of a compound. So what you're doing is you're actually making COVID more dangerous for you, because you're lessening your immune system. My mask does not protect you from me. There is no evidence for these claims on the website for these N95 marketing messages that I found. There are never references to science that supports the claims. In fact, despite almost everything that has been drilled into the public psyche regarding masks, has little to no basis in science, and absolutely no robust support in the highest level of evidence.
Yeah, Brad, we probably have about two or three or four chairs in the very back corner back there, that people can come in and sit, see all the way, so now we step back. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you so much for having me. The use of face masks has been a common response to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19 virus, particularly in densely populated areas where people are masked or large in the park, in large events, albeit with limited success. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention of the CDC has provided some guidance regarding effective face mask usage as well as information regarding the limitations of effectiveness against spreading pathogens such as the COVID-19 virus. The CDC states that face masks are not substitutes of social distancing, systematically washing our hands and avoiding touching our faces. The CDC states that only N95 masks are effective at preventing the wear from exposure to COVID-19 virus, and the mask must be disposed of after each use or specifically treated for reuse. The CDC also states that only masks constructed with certain materials and design criteria are marginally effective at keeping the wear from exposure to airborne pathogens, and only somewhat effective at preventing contaminated droplets from being exhaled into the immediate atmosphere. The majority of the masks that are worn by the public at large do not comply with any established medical standards, and no one has been able to adequately measure any effectiveness of the use in mitigating the spread of COVID-19. The CDC website states that it is still studying the effectiveness of different types of masks, and will update our recommendations as new scientific evidence become available. The CDC has not developed a definitive policy on face mask guidance for the American public due to a lack of scientific evidence. Perhaps the Palmer City Council should wait until their best guidance is established based on solid scientific evidence. Currently, the Manus Borough, which has an average of 47 new cases of COVID-19 per day and a rate of 43 cases per 100,000 people, contrasting with the Anchorage Borough, which has an average of 329 new cases of COVID-19 daily and a rate of 128 cases per 100,000 people. The Manus Valley, which does not have any face mask or social distancing mandates in place, has less cases per 100,000 people, and has been having a decreased trend of COVID-19 cases in the last 14 days. Whereas Anchorage, which has implemented reactionary and ineffective face mask mandates, is now experiencing the highest infection rates in the state. The residents of Palmer and the Manus kids who sit in a borough make up a very responsible community. We support each other, we support local business, and when we suspect we are sick or have been exposed to someone who has been sick, we extend a common courtesy to stay at home. Our community is doing a great job of mitigating...
Do you have a couple more words in the sentence that you wanna say?
Our community is doing a great job of mitigating the threat of this pandemic while still keeping our community and will hope the economy alive.
Can you say your name?
Katie Wilson.
My name is Soder Gray. Here's an article from the American Institute for Economic Research. The New England Journal of Medicine has published a study that goes to the heart of the issue of lockdowns. Question has always been whether and to what extent the lockdown, however extreme, is capable of suppressing virus. If so, we can make an argument that at least lockdowns, despite their astronomical, socioeconomic costs, achieve something. If not, nations of the world have embarked on a catastrophic experiment that has destroyed billions of lives and all expectation of human rights and liberties with no payoff at all. The American Institute for Economic Research has long highlighted studies that show no game in virus management from lockdowns. Even as early as April, a major data scientist said that this virus becomes endemic in 70 days after the first round of infection, regardless of policies. The largest global study of lockdowns compared with deaths as published in The Lancet found no association between coercive surrogacies and death per million. To test further might seem superfluous, but for whatever reason, governments all around the world, including the US, still are at the least impression that they can affect viral transmission through a range of non-pharmaceutical interventions like mandatory masks, forced human separation, stay-at-home orders, and gatherings, business and school closures, and extreme travel restrictions. Nothing like this has been tried on this scale in the whole human history. So one might suppose that policymakers have some basis for the confidence in these measures to accomplish something. A study conducted by Icahn School of Medicine at Mount Sinai in cooperation with the Naval Medical Research Center sought to test lockdowns along with testing in isolation. In May, 3,100 new recruits to Marines were given the option to participate in a study of frequent testing under extreme quarantine. The study was called CHRON, which stands for Health, COVID-19 Health Action Response for Marines. Other recruits asked, a total of 1,800 young people agreed to be given this in this experiment, which involved weekly QPCR testing and blood sampling for IgI antibody assessment. In addition, the CHRON study volunteers who did test positively...
Andy?
Yes, tell us one, Deb.
Sorry. In addition, study volunteers who did test positively on the day of enrollment were separated from their roommates and were placed in isolation. The results of this test were as follows. The cumulative number of recruits with QPCR test results going into the quarantine was 0.9%, coming out 2.8%. This is for the stringently tested study group. For the non-participants at 14 days, they were tested with a 1.7% positive COVID test rate.
Kate Zimmerman, pastor of Valley Culture. And you guys have heard all kinds of arguments. One mask are defective, unscientific, and I, and I was gonna be giving this speech today, so I'll keep this pretty simple. Here in the Valley, we value our freedom, we value our liberty. We don't wanna do like Anchorage. We feel like we can make decisions on our own as far as our health and safety and well-being. And also, we have to question the legitimacy of the government to the city Palmer to tell us whether or not we should put a face covering on, and if that's within their purview of their jurisdiction. We value liberty, and that may seem like a small thing, but liberty historically is an extremely rare, fragile, less, it's just not something that's very common in history mankind. And once it's lost, it's hard to get it back. So we don't wanna lose our freedom, we don't wanna go down the road towards quarantines and, you know, these mandates, because the next thing, if we're gonna go the direction that's intended, the next step is gonna be the domino effect of, first it's face mask coverage, now we've established that you guys have the authority to dictate in the city of Palmer that these things, and the next step is if other people are in lockdowns, we can do lockdowns too. And we know that that's devastating for the economy, the local economy, you can see it in Anchorage and other cities, and the host of problems when, with depression, with the, you know, cooking people in homes, the economic depression, and the fact that surgeries, there's ramifications beyond just saving lives that we're supposedly saving with COVID. So anyways, we value freedom here, we love our Valley, we love freedom, we enjoy it in Palmer, and also in that suburb, so thank you. So I don't have a speech either, I wasn't planning on, but I came here tonight just being in support of these people that are all in support, even mostly they're opposing this, and I'm raising five children in the Masu Valley, and I've lived here my entire life, and I think it's absolutely ridiculous that it's coming down to this kind of nonsense that you have to deal with this kind of stuff. The community of people that love their freedom and value that, and we have people trying to dictate whether or not we should be allowed to go or do business with these masks, and I think you guys have heard plenty of information and evidence tonight, that there's all kinds of studies and information that shows the PC does not work. It hasn't worked yet, how long has this been going on? When did this start? They're back in March, we started doing this stuff, and we're still dealing with it. And how many people are wearing masks already throughout Anchorage and all these other places? I think it should be very, it should be quite obvious. And I think it's appalling that we've come down with this kind of stuff. And quite frankly, it's really strange for me to, for people to think that I can take my five children out into a community and go places, and then try to explain to them what it's like in a society where we didn't have to do this, and what it's like to see people that actually have smiles on their faces and can communicate and deal with people in a proper way like we should be able to, not live in fear. There's been sicknesses and viruses since the beginning of time, and why do we think that putting masks on people's faces now is gonna stop this from happening? So anyway, that's my, what I have to say, and I think it's something that you guys really need to consider and think about, the repercussions of where this could go.
Can you say your name for our...
Play the...
Andy?
Andy, I'm here from Palmer. I didn't really prepare a speech either, but the thought that we can help people with the government what they can and cannot do is just obviously not American, and I very regret it. Americans, and I believe in the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, and this mandate is not included in that, so. And I think the number of people who stood out in the fold and who threw their butts out, this, to come out and do their, other ways to be very, is reason enough, you know, if you can't be really happy about this, so, thanks.
Palmer City Council, number 294 degrees. I'm a member of the greater Palmer community, and I'm here tonight to express my opposition to the mask mandate. I have several issues with the mandate, but the biggest one is that by passing the mandate, the city claims to have authority that it does not lawfully possess. This mandate directs the public to wear face masks when there's no actual legal means of doing so. The city of Palmer, the state of Alaska, even the federal government does not have the constitutional authority to command people to wear face masks. There's no actual means of enforcement. This mandate does not carry the legal standing of actual law. This mandate infringes on the personal liberties of individuals. These liberties are enshrined in the US Constitution, and as a US citizen, and as a US citizen does not give these liberties up just because they end at the city limits of Palmer. In addition to the impact on personal liberty, I'm concerned about the effect this mandate will have on small local businesses. Because this mandate lacks a legal means of enforcement, it relies on local businesses to enforce the city's bad policy. Point five of this mandate directs businesses to deny individuals access to services. So instead of business owners focusing on providing services to the community and staying above financially, they're directed to enforce a policy that alienates customers and hurts their business. Running a local business is hard enough. Without the policies in place that drive customers to venues outside the city limits, this has happened in Anchorage and will happen in Palmer. Even though I do not have a business front in the city, my wife and I hold business-related events here. Just recently, we had a meeting at Turkey Red, about 70 people attended. All these individuals ate lunch and purchased other services from local vendors during this day-long event. If Palmer had a mask mandate, we would have had our event outside the city limits. How many others are like us? I respectfully ask that the city council should reject this proposed mandate. We have seen firsthand what has happened with Anchorage. By getting a case of emergency power, the Anchorage Assembly has become drunk on power and is no longer responsive to the concerns of its citizens. I am concerned for Palmer's... I am concerned for Palmer City Council in the same way. Public servants, of which all of you are, do not get to mandate what people, whether they put face masks on or whether they decide to leave them off. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Please, please.
Sherman? I wrote something else that, don't read later, I never say since I've been down here for a couple hours. I'm Sherman Lifer. I'm calling from Palmer Bar. My cousin and I recently purchased it. I'm a third-generation Alaskan, and I moved to Palmer in nineteen eighty-five. I've maintained residence here since nineteen ninety-seven. Palmer Bar has been part of Palmer since nineteen thirty-six. It only feels the same in two thousand thirty-six in terms of under, if it's still there. We are struggling to make ends meet with the effects of this pandemic. We're currently treading watered best with the mask mandate to sink our business over in the middle of the week. We employ fifteen people, and we serve the community, provide a free drink to our customers. We'd like to continue to do that. We follow all state requirements, and we've recommended masks be worn by all employees in the presence of customers, and been fortunate enough to only close a couple times since taking ownership. We're closed right now for seventy-two hours to clean as one of our employees began showing signs of sickness. We preemptively close and clean our premises to be proactive and protect our customers, our employees, and the community. Palmer has kept its small-town feel throughout its history, in contrast to Alcela, five-mile stretch of highway malls. Palmer has kept its small-town feel while being able to accommodate thousands of people as we usually do during the day. I have a couple of things that, that we've, I've had a couple other points I'm going to make, but it sounds like they've been addressed by other people very well. One main point is masks right now, if you are designated to close contact, it doesn't matter if you have a mask or not. For the CDC, NDHS, as six foot away in fifteen minutes of contact is applicable whether you have a mask or not. In closing, I respectfully request that the city, the Palmer City Council, take this information to heart and as it makes its decision. This decision will impact all businesses, some will withstand it and some will not. This is a virus, and it will spread, or I hope it will pass as it has to Spanish fruit. I ask that you, that the people decide for themselves whether or not to wear a mask, and do not put this burden on the businesses in Lake Palmer, Palmer.
I'm Dr. Tyler Jordinson. I own Jordinson Clinic, I practice right across the street. And I've been excited to be able to see how we handle these issues here in the back. It's been, it's been nice to see the people have been all respectful with some of the things that we've been struggling with very few. And so I worry that things like this would send certain people on the edge with the ability to be kind to one another for those that decide not to wear a mask, or cannot wear a mask, or if you've already had COVID, you may not need to wear a mask, I mean, if you can cover it. And so I worry about the ability for us to, to take care of one another like we should be able to take care of one another. And I worry about the Palmer's ability to share our services for those that are, if we have this mask mandate, that some people, one, don't want to wear a mask, and they want to go out, but they can't, and they don't want to spend money, or they really aren't able to spend money not to wear a mask. And someone that takes care of patients, it stops people from coming in, and that's quality of life that they're struggling with, but they, they don't want to come take care of one because they're scared, and one mask mandate would stop them from doing so. And I've seen it multiple times. People are really struggling, they don't want to come out, and they need to come out, and they can't, or they choose not to. But it's these type of things that I'm afraid would set, not only my business, but other businesses, too far past the ability not to help people, and that's making me... And those are the things that I worry about, that we aren't being able to take care of each other, that we need to be able to take care of each other. And I don't feel like some of the mask mandates, and they've really done what they hoped they would do. And so my whole vision, assuming it really hasn't been made yet, and I'm glad we're talking about it, but I hope that the things that have already been talked about by people on facts will be taken into account, and the people at home in businesses here will also be worried about. And I know that we're in some major things, but we also have lives for the, and an ability to take care of our families. And I'm afraid that this would put something in the way, you know, so I'll thank you for your time and your interest in the conversation.
Can we come together?
Yeah, or you can, you can justify separately, however busy you're here, if you want to do it.
My name is Douglas, first of all, and super happy to be here today. And I have this privilege and this opportunity, and this is what, you know, America is all about, freedom, speech, and this opportunity to be very grateful. I'm a mother of five children, and I'm just trying to teach them all how to love one another and how to live in this world and see full sights, see all the potential, you know, everything, and then reach the best decision. To me, this issue is all about preserving our rights. And like someone said, just a few people before me, freedom is super fragile, it should be taken lightly. As a parent, I use the motto, "I don't give too much too soon." And I feel like that can be used here, we can hear on the side of freedom preserved in this situation more than anything. There is way more danger every day when you step into your car, and even if you're a driver, there's more danger than that than simply to walk outside and being amongst, you know, the people today. There's nothing scared about going out and being in public. Masks should be voluntary. I feel like if people are scared or, you know, feel commonplace, let them sneak up to their mouth, they have a choice to wear a mask, and then let, you know, those do it. Don't allow, let them have the opportunity to make their own choices to...
Sure, my name is Steven Parkender. I am a personist, I look a little bit paranoid from the outside, wearing my mask originally. I wear a mask at work, that's what I do, you know, that's how I go to work, I'll wear my mask. The last thing I want to do is wear a mask. So you've heard the evidences and the science behind all the mask wearing and everything, and I just feel there's been a lot of scare tactics used in all the evidence, and I think people are afraid of the virus. Speaking totally as a healthcare professional, I have taken care of totally positive patients, and it affects people differently. Just to share, most recently, I took care of a patient. We had to go, I had to wear a full PPE to go talk to her, and she was laying in her bed, it just, she looked like any of you, you know, she was not fatally, you know, mortally ill, but we had all these precautions that had been set forth because of this COVID virus. So I think the virus is not as deadly as what people think it is, or as dangerous. So people are afraid, and I believe wearing these cloth masks has maybe given people a false hope that it's going to represent a thing for them. A virus is going to find its way in and out of these cloth masks, but it just is, that's the truth. If you want to block a virus, you need to wear an N95 mask that has been tested and fit-tested. There's all kinds of N95 masks, and they don't fit everybody's face, you have to have it personally tested. Yeah, and I wanted to thank you for hearing us out, appreciate your time, and I'll be putting in a lot of time tonight, so, very much, that's all I have to say.
Hi, I'm Steven Parkender. I guess I'm here just to show that there are a lot of people that don't think the mask mandate is right. I think that we've given a lot of options for those who don't want to wear a mask, and we're not giving a lot of options to those who don't believe that they are, that they don't hide the virus, right? We've given options for people to stay at home during school, we've given options to have, take up groceries. So I don't believe that it is necessary to then take away my right to be able to go to the grocery store, be able to smile, or go to, like, small businesses who choose to not have masks, that's not, I feel like, the government's place, two steps, how people they can do on our property, and to tell me what to do when we've already laid out several different places for people to safely do these things, or what they think is safety. So I think that there should also be options for me to also be able to do what I want to do, the way I want to do it, if we're giving other people options as well.
Right, so we have a whole row, we have several seats in here, so. Yeah, but we can, we roll in the back without anybody.
You know, I don't know if there's anything I can say that hasn't already been said, you know, about, you know, seeing, I think, what I, what I could say that hadn't already been said, that, I'm trying to think, when you think of a knee-jerk reaction, it's something that hasn't really been thought through before you take that first step. You haven't thought the process out, and what you're going to do, how it's going to be, just take the first step. And that's, now this is over, and you haven't really worked out the feeling yet. I called the Palmer Police Department a few days ago when I heard about this, and I said, "How, you know, what would it look like for being able to, you know, to control this?" You know, how, for lack of a better word, like, what would it look, what would a picture of it look like if somebody was driving down the road, going into the store without a mask? What would you do? How would you handle that? And they said, "We have absolutely no clue. We're in the dark about this. We haven't been told anything about this either." And for the force that's going to be on the front line trying to enforce this, for them to not even know about how they're going to make that work, days before it's supposed to be implemented or voted on, put into action, I think it shows a huge lack of forethought when it comes to how we're going to do this, is this the best thing? Let's look at all the options, let's look at the plan and information based on a fact point of view. And, yeah, I just, I just feel like that, that would be a good way to start implementation of something that's certainly a bit more opposed to, as you can obviously see. So I just, everything else, I think was stated very, very well, and I think that's really the only way, that's small, so, the very first thing I thought of wasn't need to thought of, communicate with people, so, you need to get this in. So I just, I feel like it's worth noting that that's, you know, that's, should be taken into consideration, and that if it wasn't, and obviously it wasn't, it's definitely something that should, should be thought of. I'm not that close to you, so, sorry. Anyway, I appreciate what anyone else said, and I want to say whatever.
Okay, there's some brave people this afternoon, so, sorry. I'm going to be nervous. Just state all three sentences, make sure you state your name, because we have it in our, our, and you're totally good.
I'm Whitney Martin, and I'm a Palmer resident. I'm actually a open instructor at the downtown studio here, and I'm the first responder to the Massey Borough water rescue team. I don't have anything profound to say, but it does affect me, like, we're already, as an emergency responder, being required to wear masks, like, we go to the pool and swim, and outside of the pool, we have to have masks on. But then I have my personal beliefs about having our freedoms taken away, so it puts me in that position of whether I'm going to get to that point where I have to choose between my liberty, my rights, my personal beliefs, and my social income, and my ability to help others in the community. So I don't like that this has come about. My other concern, and sorry for saying this, is that, that the decision's already been made, and we're just kind of being humored here. So I would hope that you all are keeping an open mind and really hearing us, because I know it's going to give you a flux of information and a lot of retentiveness, you've got a lot of emails to go through, but I hope that you all are able to keep an open mind and really hear us. And I will say, one last thing is, I was, I had a hip injury, I was supposed to have surgery, and then they closed down all of the elective surgeries, even though, like, I had to have the surgery because I was in a lot of pain. I mean, I was one of the surgeries that got canceled, and when they were able to do the elective surgeries, like, in that two-month period, I got worse, and we got a lot of pain and having the ability to move around. But when I was able to have my surgery, everybody still had to wear the mask, and that's not a fun position to be in, you know, being in the prep room, having to wear a mask, and you can't see anybody's face or anything. Fortunately for me, my significant other also works in the, in the city department at Massey Regional, so I was familiar with a lot of the eyes. And so for me, you know, it was, it was okay, but I definitely felt for all the other people, that when they're having surgery, not, not seeing that face, because they made, basically made us keep our masks on until, until they took me to sleep. So, yeah, all I ask is that you guys keep an open mind and don't require us to wear masks, because there's a lot of us, I think, that won't anyways, and then if, you know, what's going to happen, us in the grocery store, are you going to come, you know, are I going to spend the night in jail? Which I'm willing to! Because sometimes, I mean, some things, even though it's small, you've got to take a stand. I appreciate you guys listening to me. Thank you. I'm like shaking. At least the warmth is back in my hands, I mean, outside.
Nicole, he's outside. Johnny Thiel?
Have you seen him?
I think it went out to the store to get him back out.
What was his name?
Johnny T H I E L. Was he here or he left?
He was right over there, he walked out just a minute ago.
Okay, so Brendan, you want to say anything?
They were, they were able to speak with their families, so they sort of got out of order.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. All right, Paige Bailey?
Can you all come up?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Are you all speaking individually?
Yes.
Yeah, wow.
Okay.
Okay, my name is Paige Bailey. I don't have a lot to say, all these other people are using their full freemates, but I support Palmer. I think that people should be able to decide for themselves if they want to wear a mask or not, especially if they've had COVID before. But I do want to say thank you for the opportunity to be able to talk, so, talk back.
My name is Sammy Close, and I'm against the mask mandate because I believe America is a freedom of choice, and I'm a very social person, I like going out to the store smiling, talking to people, and it just makes my day, and I just love having that, and I would not like it if we take on it. I'll have to say, thank you.
Hi, I'm Suriis Bailey. Don't have anything to say either, a lot of good things have been said. A lot of good things have been said. Uh, one thing I want to say is our whole family got COVID. So we're COVID survivors. And I think media has portrayed COVID as this awful terrible fear virus. But all of us got it. Did we feel like terrible for a few days? Absolutely. Um, you know, something you didn't really want to get out of bed for. Um, but nothing that COVID, you know, drugs, over counter drugs can help with. Um, and so I feel like there's a fear out there about it. But actually, when you get, and I was fearful before, believe me. I was freaking out, like feeling a little, you know, uh, something in your throat. You're like, oh my gosh, I have COVID. So I feel like once I got it, there was a huge stress that came off my shoulders. And I was like, oh my goodness, like now I know what it's like. It's not as bad as everybody presents it to be. Um, so I kind of feel like we all felt that way. I have two other kids too, so it was all six of us. Um, but my second thing, I just want to say is that we've been in Palmer for 11 years now from California. Um, and I love this town. My kids love it. Just today Paige came and went and saw all the decorations that Palmer has got. So we just love our little town. And so I would love to have them have that community again. And that's a big reason why we're here is my daughter was like, Mommy, I don't want it to change. And so, um, we're here to kind of say that our trainees need to be, have always be braved by the man for these folks. Thank you for being here, guys. Thank you.
Dean Bailey. Uh, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, and I, again, I haven't been here the whole time, but I'm sure you guys have heard all of this, straight off the state website. Uh, number of cases, number of deaths. Uh, it's a 0.4% death rate in the state of Alaska. 0.4%. Hospitalizations right there as well. I've been tracking this since July. I'm a municipal administrator, um, developing COVID policy and all that kind of stuff. The percentage has varied by about 10%. But they're not anywhere different than they have been. I, I think there's a little over the threshold. Focus on the number of cases, not the severity of the cases. I think that's an issue. In reading the mandate as of April, I have, I have a couple of problems. Uh, my daughter works at Subway, my son works at McDonald's. I have two other kids. One works at Bagdad, one works at Fred Meyer. Literally it states businesses and building owners shall deny evidence to any individual who fails to comply with the order and shall require or compel removal of such individuals from the premises. My daughter works with other teen girls at Subway. I'm confused as to how they're going to compel individuals to be removed from their business. You know, is that what we call the police force? And the one that really scares me is the very last, well, at the bottom, number six. It says, "The city reserves the right to use all available enforcement options to ensure compliance with this ordinance." I, I don't know you, you don't know me. You guys may be completely trustworthy individuals who would never abuse that. But I think if that precedent is set, that's a scary thing to somebody, to be able to use all enforcement options. That is scary to me. That verbage sounds anti-Semitic to me. And that really bothers me. And I think one of the things you guys may really partially consider is the precedent being set. And in 15, 20, 30 years, once that precedent's set, I can be a. And so that's really all I have to say. Thank you so much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Round eight.
My name is David Miller. I am a resident of the greater Mass River area. If you'd see the council, mayor, council members, mostly chief of police, all of you. Thank you for letting us come and sit in front of you to share two thoughts on this particular topic. When the pandemic began, generally speaking, most people quickly responded to the request to help flatten the curve, as we know that. And, you know, you'll find that most people, generally speaking, as far as last things go, are very industrious and hardworking and very willing to help. The governor recently had his teleconference where he said the following. "My daughter's governor does not tell you how to live your life. My job is to ensure the security and safety of Alaska. I cannot do that without your help. I'm asking each of you to reach deep for the next three weeks. If we can buy time for our critical workers, if we can keep our systems operational, we can avoid being forced to take further action." So basically, we're asking to flatten the curve again. I've been helping to do that. Many people that I know have been willing to do that. I think making a mandate is a erroneous step. And I'm going to state a few reasons for that here in just the next minute, 30 seconds. But one thing that I want to say is I'm very grateful for the governor and for his tone and for his approach. That appeals to Alaskans. And I hope that you guys that are serving on the city council and that are considering this today will recognize that we will much more deeply appreciate that approach than a mandate, please. It is not something that is a very effective leadership method. And especially given the circumstances that surround this COVID, it's, there's, there's a lot of work that we can do besides making mandates. We know that there is, uh, the transmission of this whole thing occurs through the droplets, sometimes through aerosol. But ultimately, the masks that we generally are wearing, they're not designed for true protection for from this virus. And so ultimately, what we're doing is we're creating a stigma. This is bad leadership. When you force people to wear something, a mask, and it's really not even doing an effective job. It can do some good, uh, but, but it's not truly doing an effective job. What we're creating is a false narrative. And that concept of creating a, a false, uh, concept of safety that really is setting you up. And, uh, and I'll close up here. So it was, you get hurt enough. But with that said, I really encourage all of you on the city council to table this, this whole discussion. Do not move forward with a mandate and let's find better ways to handle this situation. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. Just my luck, I've been behind somebody or two years of that, so. I didn't have anything super elaborate to say. I, uh, I just wanted to stress my opposition to the mask mandate thing. I, uh, I don't believe that there is, I don't believe that there's evidence supporting, uh, masks and that they're being used currently. Hey, I, I also believe that as we look at our country, our states, um, and we see what's, what's happening. I believe that mandates like this are causing a lot more problems and a lot more damage to our system economically. And I believe that will happen here. I don't want, I don't want to see, I don't want to see Palmer in the small building states. I'm part of, part of the charm of this, of the city. I don't want to see that harm. Move around, see, uh, neighbors living as neighbors over, over the same because it's such a contentious issue today. I believe by making a mandate for that, we're only going to make that situation that much worse. And I believe it's going to be our false sense of security. But, uh, thank you.
Can you state your name? I don't have data. Or Joshua, sorry.
Joshua Doak.
My name is William Hope. And I first came to Alaska in 1966. I'm currently in Anchorage, Arizona. I travel through the valley quite a bit and to Palmer especially. And when I do, I spend a lot of money there. Now, I'm against your proposed mask mandate. There's been a lot of concerns about people wasting their rights in this process. Rightly so. Our rights come from God, our creator, not from man's blood. And so therefore, they should not be infringed. Last night, the Anchorage Assembly voted down an amendment to their emergency extension that would, uh, that would specify that the mayor be cautious and protective of our civil liberties. Now, in the Anchorage Charter and the municipal code, they do have an existing ordinance that when it comes to emergency situations, specifies that the mayor will be cautious and protective of our civil liberties. We had this voted down last night in resolution. So it kind of sounds like this will be happening here at Palmer. If, uh, you're giving authority to the mayor's office to, uh, do anything to enforce this mask mandate, what about people's civil liberties? This is really a concern. This is America. And US public officials, when they take their oath of office, and I used to, as a federal employee years ago, took the same oath. And a part of that oath is the US Constitution that you defend and protect. And that US Constitution also includes the Bill of Rights, the first 10 amendments. That's the embodiment of our civil, civil rights and civil liberties. Okay? And, uh, I could go on and repeat what a lot of other people have said here tonight. And I'm sure you, you probably tired of hearing it all, but rather than being redone, I just want to say that, uh, as a traveler through the valley here, if the city were to adopt this mask mandate, and, uh, that might be definitely pointing me to some of your businesses out there, in which case, then I'm not going to spend any money there. And there'd be a lot of other people that won't spend money there as well. A lot of people currently come to the valley to spend money because of the crap that's happening in Anchorage right now. And if Palmer goes that same direction, uh, guess what? Palmer may end up losing a lot of revenue. And we all, these rough economic times, we all need that revenue. Okay? So, uh, that's, that's my two cents worth. Please take it from someone who cares a lot. This is a beautiful town. I'd like coming here. I'd like spending money here when I come here. But if you adopt something like this, I don't need to spend any money there anymore. And that's it. Thank you.
My name is Elsie Howard. I live here in the Palmer area. Actually, I have a mask. Quite a long night. Plenty of opposition to this. Again, you've already heard this before and I'm here again. You guys are representatives of the people. Obviously, the people have spoken. It's what I hear you have with 400 emails to read through also tonight. I'm pretty sure about 80% of those are.
I know.
Or 85%. Are also going to be against this. It's simple. When this first came out, everyone had fear. Everyone was scared. Everyone that got tested, came up positive, ran to the hospital because we heard horror stories about ventilators, horrors worrying about this and that. You know, co-morbidity issues, things like, you know, that we saw rampant for the first two or three months. My wife forces it back to the hospital. Even though they keep testing, keep testing, more positive. Nobody's going to the hospital because they realize it's not as bad as everyone says. It's like flu-like symptoms, cold-like symptoms. If you have other extenuating circumstances, that's assured. But the same thing holds true with pneumonia, with bacterial flu. I mean, you name it, it's what happens. You know, no mix out of this world alive. But I will tell you this, people are frustrated. People have had it. With everything going on in our country, everything going on in the state, people are frustrated, people have it. And they're not going to keep putting up with this stuff. And this many people will freeze their butts off to make it known their intentions. Just to either be ignored or be trampled over. I guarantee you this, those businesses that do not comply, we will protect them. We will spend more money with them. Take the example of Andy Kreiner in Anchorage. Pretty sure you've done better financially than you was before, even with all the drapery measures that are wonderful. Mayor down there decided to try to pull. So I will guarantee you this, I'll use every one of my resources and you all know I have a big following and other people out here does as well. Anyone who does not comply and chooses to exercise their freedoms, we will support them. Financially, we'll support them, everything else we can. Those businesses that try to segregate us or not allow us to build their businesses or try to enforce this stuff under unenforceable rules, we will boycott them and we'll shut them down. You know, we have other options to do. We don't need to be violent. We don't need to stand out and, and do foolish things. But we have other ways to make this right. And we will. The community will. This is Palmer. This is the Mass River Valley, a zip tight community. But no longer will we be trampled. And please don't ask us to be. So that's all I have to say. Thank you guys for your time.
My name is Sam Frederickson Hope. I'm here for my father, James Jackson Frederickson. He's 85. And my brother, James Herbert Frederickson. He's 58. And my son, James Jackson Hope. And he's 20 years old. Um, I'm absolutely horrified that, that Palmer would actually even consider this. I really am. Um, I find it appalling. Um, I think that a lot of state governments, city governments, rural governments have really overstepped their, um, their powers. Um, I think that, uh, they're not listening to constituents. Uh, it's obvious it's not supported. It's extremely obvious. I'm curious to see what the final outcome is because nationally, it appears the governments aren't listening to the people. I have a consensus with a lot of people right now. They're feeling that government's not listening and we don't trust you. Um, I love this town. I love it immensely. Um, and like I said, I'm really, really appalled. Um, I have a large extended family. Eight family members in Mississippi who had COVID. One of them was a nurse. Um, they never had to seek medical treatment. They did quarantine, they're fine. My son and I have both had COVID. We had it back in January before they even started really talking about it. We didn't know at the time that we did. We had to wait a long time to get tested to see we had it because they weren't doing the testing that we could have. I value my freedom. I believe in the Constitution. And, um, what's going on right now is really upsetting. And it's really causing a lot of people to go against one another. And I think that this mandate would do far more damage. It's doing damage economically and socially. And it's actually giving a lot of damage to people's health too. Um, I myself cannot wear a face mask. At work, they make me wear, I have to wear shields, which is, I can wear it because I can breathe better. Face mask giving me migraines. Um, I don't want to see my son sitting all day wearing a face mask. I don't want him to do it. And I think I respect your guys' um, everybody's, everybody's belief they want to wear a face mask. I support it. You know, that, that's, that's your choice. It shouldn't be my choice whether I have a face mask. I'm not going to get close to somebody. I'm not going to be within their little bubble. But to ask this, to demand that people wear a face mask is a step in the wrong direction. And, um, it's really going to affect this little town economically tremendously. This town thrives on homelessness. And you guys are going to kill it if you guys do this. There's people that are coming out from Anchorage right now, coming out from other areas to shop here that's like Palmer's breath of fresh air. Let's keep it like that. You know, and listen, listen to the people. This is important. This is really, really important. Don't jump on the bandwagon and try and follow the rest of the nation, you know, and push their constituents around. Okay? This is really important. Thank you.
Grace?
Good evening, everyone. Goodbye. I just want to say, um, I am against this mask mandate. Um, if others want a new mask, it's fine. I don't want a mandate. Um, I came up from a country where to be put in jail for not wearing. I came up from a country where I was put in jail for not wearing a mask. And as a first generation US citizen, and I'd like to speak for my right and exercise my right by coming up here. And we've been standing up outside, freezing cold, in the tropics. And so, yeah, well, thank you.
Can you state your name, please? Always still.
Hi there. My name is Donna Anthony. I'm actually retired from the city of Palmer with the police department. I'm honored to be retired from the city of Palmer. But at this moment, I'm very disappointed to see that we have something that's so unconstitutional with a mask mandate on the floor here. I wrote you guys a letter, but I at least wanted to speak to you to let you know that I don't support this. I'm going to come at a different angle with you guys. If you look as an example, Center of 14, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, you have a Supreme Court judge that just ruled against the governor with his mandates are unconstitutional. You really need to look at that. The other question I have is, you have any here that business owners or shell mandate this? How are you going to enforce business owners to shell mandate mask mandates? We put them in a really bad position. There's a lot of enforcement now. Who's going to enforce these fines? What is the fine? It's unconstitutional for the officers who took an oath of holding United States Constitution to enforce this mask mandate. You're putting the city in a huge liability. You guys will get sued if you do this. Law enforcement should not enforce these mandates. It's not constitutional. And that's all I have to say. And I sent my letter. Thank you.
And Brad, we still don't have people. Peter? Peter?
I'm sorry, your time, man.
What's that?
I said, I forgot your time.
My name is Michael. I'm a scale of 225. He's fire with Avenue in Palmer, Alaska. And I've been listening quite a bit here. I believe the question really doesn't seem to me to be a policy. Well, there are two questions. One is a policy question, if you ask or not to ask. But there's another question that got sort of entwined with all of this. And that is the question of whether COVID-19 is serious or not. We've been following this on a daily basis, looking at all the sources, some of which have been quoted tonight, one side or the other. And what I come away with, having done that, is something that is summarized here by all people. Deborah Burks, the court leader of the White House Coronavirus Task Force. Some of the reputation. She recently toured North Dakota to meet with officials battling one of the worst COVID-19 outbreaks in the country. Number one, as it turns out. She commended the state's testing efforts, but she was distraught by the noticeable lack of face masks in public spaces. And I quote, "This is the latest mass that we've seen in retail establishments of any place we've been." I mention that because there have been a number of references, studies, and most of the meta-analyses that I have reviewed have said, you have to understand this thing started, you know, early March. There were, and as time has gone on, we're not talking about the ability to do a particular meta-analysis or studies that made some sense until quite recently. We conducted all over the world. And the result is, what we do know is the 250,000 Americans have died. You can make all the comparisons to the forms of death from automobile accidents, heart disease, cancer, whatever. But the summary is pretty clear, in my opinion. COVID-19 is a serious thing. We just saw this Tuesday, the highest level of deaths per day in the United States, 17,000. The projection by many epidemiologists who do this work are saying, yeah, by the time we hit Thanksgiving or thereabouts, you'll be at 3,000 a day. And that's not something that's tailing up. So I'm not, and I assign on the neutral part here because there are a whole set of issues associated with individual rights and wearing masks and so on. But what I'm pointing out is that a number of the studies that are implying the emergency showing mask mandates or wearing a mask are showing they are effective. Maybe they're accompanied by certain factors as well. But that's more the issue. The issue is, how do we, in the face of a growing epidemic, and I believe it is, deal with this, whether it's a mask mandate or something else? And I thank you for listening.
So council members, should we go ahead and take? Do we have somebody else? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Yes, go in. And move right to the head of the line.
I'm Kayla Pumpuck. I'm against this mask mandate. I'm born, raised in Palmer. And since the COVID-19 pandemic, the city has done very well by not implementing the same type of requirements that Anchorage has. The small business turnout has been incredible, and the flood of Anchorage citizens coming out and spending their money in Palmer has been incredible. Mainly because Anchorage has shut so much down and the strict face covering requirements, Anchorage municipalities, Anchorage municipalities, businesses are tired of it and moving their businesses out toward the valley. And the people of Anchorage are tired of it. And flooding out to the valley as well. So by implementing the same regulations they have in Anchorage, you are going to stop the business growth. It also brings in more tax money for the city of Palmer. It is not the government's decision on how people should run their life. You should not be taking away the people's freedoms and liberties. If the people want to, they should wear a mask and not go out. But the decision is their freedom to make. The people that want to should be able to go out and enjoy themselves without a mask if that's what they choose. That is part about living in a free country. Some city council members want to be able to hold last-minute meetings with limited attendance. It's wrong. All it does is fast-track and push agendas without public opposition because there hasn't been enough news of it. It makes me wonder why do we even need a city council if all we are going to do is just mirror what Anchorage does instead of making and writing our own policies? Thank you.
Anybody else show up out there? And there's nobody using cars or anything left out waiting to come in or anything? Okay, all right. So what about, this is leading up 9:03 here. Why don't we take a break for 9:15? The, let me just state before, so something you can be thinking about. We have, what, over 500 emails? That, over 500 emails that people have sent in to Norma. And so I guess the question will be, do you want to come back? Do you want to read all of them? Or have her read them? That is, you know, in opposition or in support? And try to get through them? As you know, we have 11 o'clock mandate for a jury. You can extend that for one hour. Oh, somebody else just in then? Okay. All right, so. But anyway, be thinking about that, how you want that handled? And then whether we can't get all of that to the other, whether we should extend the meeting, have continuation of the meeting and that. So anyway, go ahead, sir. Welcome.
Sorry, I literally ran over here after I had a meeting as well.
Okay, all right. We'll give you a minute to get your breath. Go ahead.
My name is Matthew Busby. I love Palmer to death. I came over here from the Army. I'm probably not going to say anything you haven't heard already. I'm at the hospital on a regular basis. I wear a mask and I understand that for some people, COVID is death. And there's a lot of people I know that have, they have medical conditions that keeps them from being able to come out on a regular basis. And I am very, very judicious in the way that I spend time with them. And I am more than willing to wear a mask. But I'm willing to wear the mask because as a sovereign individual, I understand that I have individual liberty. And my freedom of movement should not be dictated by this mask. I understand that I walk into Fred Meyer's and they have masks there. I'm so grateful that they're there because I forget it like all the time. That's what I do. But what I don't want is I don't want to walk in the subway one day after I've gotten off of a clinical and then have a police officer approach me with a gun. I don't want to see a minority be approached by a police officer with a gun because they couldn't find a mask, but they have to go outside their home. I don't want to see somebody be approached by people who are giving them bad looks because they don't have the means to either have a mask or because they don't believe in what's going on on the individual level. I'm asking that, by the grace of God, or whatever power that may be here, that you consider that there's a lot of people that will wear this mask. But if you mandate it, you're going to have to selectively enforce it because it cannot be completely 100% followed. And when the few people that do get the short end of the stick, it's going to be made an example. And it's not going to be good for any of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming over. Okay, so back to what I was saying. So we have some options. The court has just given me a note saying that we have over 600 emails. And I think most of the people that sent an email in and understood that they're in favor or against the ordinance where it's going to be entered into the record. So, and so think about that, whether we want to read absolutely all of the emails and by all, I mean every word that was put in, or we just want a summary of those that are in favor or not in favor. Or, you know, so anyway, it's 9:07 or 9:08 here. So let's come back at 9:20. That'll give you a little bit of the time to think about it. And then we'll discuss what our course is. After we get done putting in the emails, then we will take and have some time to discuss about what we're going to do with ordinance. And I'm standing here thinking, do I say something?
Can I release my security staff?
Yeah. Thank you. Don't lock the door.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay. So anyway, we're being handed these.
All right, my Facebook friends, thank you for sharing with us today. Don't forget to like and share. I am calling it a night and heading home. All testimony is done. They're down to just reading the emails that everybody had sent in. Don't forget, please go to my website, politick.com, P-O-L-I-T-A-D-I-C-K dot com. Click that donate button. Anything you contribute helps. Make sure that I can make it to more events just like this one. Your donations are greatly appreciated. Keep the content coming to you. You all have yourself a great night.